Please. A roll call.
Orlando Cory.
Here.
Bozey. Absen. Daggy.
Here.
Shapiela.
Here.
Beckenurny. Truppa.
Here.
Ferris. Here.
Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Yes, it is.
Second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The. Agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, uh, ZBA minutes, um, in February 21st, 2024 meeting.
A motion to.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Preface. The Clay Township's zoning board of appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance 126. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present today. At least. Sorry. At least three members must vote affirmatively to. Affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored by the chairperson, gets belabored, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When your public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. We're gonna open up new business. Um, first case is Jay ZBA 2024-001, applicant for 8366 Anchor Bay Drive. Please come up to the podium, state your name, address, and why you're here. Right there, sir.
Right up there, sir.
I haven't done this for 20 years. I'm John Adams, Trevor's dad. If you're familiar with Trevor, he does a lot of projects, not to be confused with other John Adams in the area. Uh, I'm building a boathouse and it's been in the process for probably a little over five years. Uh, I got all the approvals through the Eagle. And as it were, the water was real high at the time and I couldn't get anybody over to do the marine work. So finally, the permit was almost expired. Well, I think it's expired right now, but we got it all done this winter. I got somebody in and they did an excellent job. Couple of things that I changed from the plan. I guess the variance is really a height restriction. And I don't know if anybody's been out there or not, but the neighbor on the one side has got a two-story boathouse and neighbor on the other side, he's got a, you know, basically a one-story. And then next door, that's a full two-story. We built that one, so I know it's a full two-story. This actually, you know, you could say it's a two-story, but it's more like an attic because if you look at the section, the roof trusses actually start on the plate of the wall. And the other side's got a short knee wall and that's just to center it. The elevations, I'm an architect. I've got a little steeper roof than most of the buildings because I think aesthetically it looks better. It's a 10 pitch, which means 10 up and 12 over. Most of them are five or six. And nowadays, the new houses are all either flat roofs or 10 pitch. So that's part of it. The other thing I kinda wanted to mention, oh, we moved the building slightly. After we surveyed it, we found the neighbors on the one side. Oh, by the way, here's a letter. Other neighbor couldn't be here. He's in, I don't know, Japan tonight. He's five. But he's, he's in favor. I haven't got anybody who has any objections to it that I know. But when we surveyed it, we found that that boathouse was closer than fi- uh, three feet. So since that was, uh, it was like a little less than two feet by the time we had the overhang, the gutter, it was almost on a property line and I had three foot. So we moved it over, uh, so now it's five feet. And the other side was nine, now it's seven feet. So we got a lot of distance between them. And the boathouse, the way I had it designed, the boathouse is actually set back off the road. As you can see, I was able to get a permit to get out into the canal eight feet. The biggest problem along there, as you probably know, is parking, small lots. And when we build a boathouse, most of them are close to the road and they don't have parking except for maybe one parallel parking. So I'm able to park front to back. I'm a little over 20 feet off the road, so it makes it a lot nicer from that standpoint. I don't really have anything else to add to it. It's been a long, I have a lot of antique boats, wood deck boats, so that's my primary reason for building this because I'm getting old. I'm 78 years old. Clawing around on the deck of these antique boats trying to cover them up is getting to be kinda scary. So it's really nice to have a boathouse. Just drive it in, pull it up and you're done. I don't know if I have anything else to add to it. It's, I think it's a nice looking boathouse. It's strictly a boathouse. It's not concrete, you know, like a lot of them are with a, a, you know, for vehicles or whatever on one side. It's strictly a boathouse. So the inside is docks. And the one thing I would like to do is do a slight change to the building because now my dock is so short on the one side because I moved the building over to get away, to give us a little more room, is on the, um, the south side, the dock is so small, it's only maybe 30 inches at the most. And I'd like to be able to store some stuff, gas tanks, you know, life jackets and that kind of thing. So I'd like to cantilever out an area about two feet along that side, which that'll make it, uh, instead of seven, about five, five feet. But it's just gonna be a cantilever, kinda like a bay window, so I can just put gas tanks and whatever. Outside of that, everything, you know, is the same. I would like to just mention, I know Trevor said you guys are always gotta come up every time we have a variance and it'd be nice to adjust it, uh, some of the, some of the new applications that you had. Oh, by the way, when I first applied for this, I came over to the building department and I talked to the inspector and this was five years ago and I said, well, do I have to go through the ZBA? He looked at it, says, no, you're fine, I can get you a permit. Well, I didn't get the permit because I couldn't get the guys to do the marine work. So finally, I get the guys with marine work, come back and of course now you've upgraded your ordinance for the boathouses and that's why it's in violation, I guess, of the roof line. But one thing I'd like you to kinda think about, oh, two things actually. When you have a, a structure and you're limiting the height of the building, at that ti- you either got one choice, you either go for a variance or you keep the roof pitch low. So if, in my opinion, if you've got a, a building that looks like a basic garage with like a three or four pitch, it's gonna look cheap. All the new homes are either flat roofs or they have a higher pitch. So from that standpoint, you're kinda forcing people to build a building that I think doesn't look as attractive as, you know, it might, might be. And the other thing is there seems to be a big variance on building a garage and a boathouse. In my opinion, if you wanna build a building and cover up your crap, I don't think it matters if it's a boathouse or automobile storage or whatever, just nice to get something done to cover things up. I've been on that, on Anchor Bay Drive for over 30 years and it's really improved a lot, so. Questions?
So you don't plan on having a loft up there or anything like that for anyone to be able to stay in?
Well, I don't know what we're gonna do. It's gonna be for storage, basically. And, um, I know my son says, oh, it'd be really nice to put a toilet in at one time. With the price of doing that, it's, I don't see that in plans because it's, uh, you know how much water bills cost out here now, so. But it'd be nice to, I'd like to have at least a fish cleaning station, so.
Do I see a door wall with a balcony?
Yes, the, the part of the structure that's over the canal is not really, um, a building with a roof. It's a deck. It's a waterproof deck. And it's just, you know, so we can go out there and sit, fish, kids can jump off, swim, whatever.
Okay, when I was over there, um, looking at what was going on, I was approached and I was notified that next month there's going to be another parcel also from you.
There you go. We'll be friends by then.
Couple doors down, also for boat storage or family and friends to, um, to be at. So I was just, I was just trying to figure out.
I can talk about that for a minute because one of my neighbors is here.
Right.
And, um, I don't know where, is Jerry here? No, I didn't see Jerry. We bought the property between their houses. It came up for sale and, um, because we didn't want a house built there, they didn't because they, you know, kinda have a parking spot out there, overflow parking. It's just like I say, when we have holidays come up, you know, people are parking wherever. So they wanted to just put the property, take it over, you know, add 20 foot to each one of their houses and that's it. I bought the other side and just another place to dock boats. My wife's got a nice garden over there now, so maybe I can get a break for my taxes. I don't know, being agricultural. We, and now we got more parking. So, and we, we all get together, you know, we're such good neighbors, so we all kinda share stuff and, uh, so that's, that's the story. So we'll be in talking to you and, uh, maybe you can get that straightened out for us, but that's all we're doing. We're not building anything. So. Any other questions?
I'm gonna open up, hell, one second, I'm gonna open up the public comment right now. Anyone wish to speak with or about this case? Anyone? I'm looking for a letter, so. Anyone for Anchor Bay Drive?
I have one right here.
For Anchor Bay Drive? It says due to Anchor Bay Drive.
There you go. Yes.
Is that the one that he just handed you? Same one that?
Same one.
Okay, so we got, we got that letter.
Oh, you did?
Could you please read that one?
We have read the letter the township sent us regarding the variance of zoning ordinance number 126. We have reviewed the plans the applicant at 8366 Anchor Bay Drive, 74-14-109-103-000 has submitted and find them acceptable. I'm in favor of granting the applicant a variance for the additional two and a half height requested and second story with eight-foot ceilings. With such a variety of structures on the Anchor Bay Drive canal side, we fail to see how granting this variance would adversely affect the aesthetics of Anchor Bay Drive.
Yeah.
This was written by Edmund F. and Elizabeth K. Mueller on Anchor Bay Drive.
They're the neighbors to the north side of me and they have a boathouse. That's a two-story right now, where my boat is presently being housed. They're really great neighbors. He sold his boat and said, well, put your boat over there because I'm doing, I'm making a big mess on our property till we get it done.
All right, is there anyone else? I'm gonna close public comment. Can I ask Gary, can you just sit down for one second? I'm gonna ask Gary or Billy official a couple of questions, please. Hi Gary.
Good evening.
Did you see his new revised plans as far as moving?
No, the actual plans, we have plans, but it sounds like he's made some revisions to those plans. But no revision, I think, changes the height request nor the second floor request. So I haven't seen the plans and I generally don't. I'll, I'll look at them, but I won't do a review on them until we see if those plans are approved, variances are approved by you guys.
So he's not gonna get any like one foot if he went up over that, over two feet?
Yeah.
That five foot, so you don't, you haven't seen that yet?
He, no, well, we're moving over to three foot. It was less than that.
He said five foot.
No, on the other side, where he has seven, if he cantilevers it, that gives him five, but on the other side of the building, that side yard is only gonna be three feet. So that's the minimum.
Is that what you?
No, the other side is five feet. It was three feet on the plans.
Did you, did you, did you, since you changed that, have you gone to the, before this meeting, have you gone and changed that with the?
Yeah, it's right here, he has that. It shows on the plan, five feet. It's on my plan right here.
Okay.
It was a field change.
So. So it's like a one foot and a half, if that's true?
If that's true.
Okay. The eight foot is above the attic, you know, that's still a considered living. How, how did we get over the water? Do you know what I mean? Do you have any jurisdiction on it? You have any? That's just the first.
That was a permit that was issued by Eagle to allow it to be out over the water. Uh, I was surprised when I saw it, but it's clear by the Eagle permit approval that that was part of the approval. I don't think today, if, if he applied today, um, it would happen.
Yeah, I've heard.
But, um, but previous administration at Eagle didn't see a problem with it and they allowed that eight foot out into the water.
And five years ago, was the, was our variance still in place for our, our height?
Yes, they were still there, just maybe not being enforced.
I understand. I don't care about anything old right now. So in your eyes, this is almost 100% over the water. Do you know the percentages that's not over the water? Does any, do you, do you know, you said there's eight feet over the seawall into the canal?
Right.
And then how much is all boat well and how much do you have that's land?
Over the land?
Loaded question.
28 overall.
I can't read it, that's my problem, I can't see.
28 overall minus eight would be 20 feet.
20 feet of land?
Mm-hmm.
So you know you're, you're not allowed to put any second floor living period bathroom above water. There's never ever gonna be a bathroom in that boathouse legally.
Right.
Have any concerns with that balcony? Is there anything on the balcony over the water? You're not addressing any of that?
We're not addressing that till.
So we just have variance in the eight foot?
Correct. And we'll make sure it's safe out there. But the only thing, if we could, if you do find it in his favor, to definitely stipulate second floor is for storage only and no sanitary facility.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's why I asked how much is over, you know, we have nothing over land, so there's no, there will be a room.
Correct.
Thank you. If we have any more questions?
You all have plans for this?
We do.
Okay.
Just a little bit.
It's very blurred. Just from the print.
Looks great.
Should be a nice looking structure, I hope.
Looks great.
I do have one more question. If there's no plan to build on the second parcel, why are you coming in front of the ZBA?
This, this isn't on that second parcel.
No.
No, she's talking about the next meeting.
Yeah, because he already, he already told me there was gonna be a meeting next month.
Well, I don't know, that's a good question. As you probably well aware, there's all kinds of properties that, that have different owners from one side of the road to the other. There are different lot numbers, there are different legal descriptions, but apparently the assessor doesn't see it quite that way. So, you know, it's, it's just gotta be clarified, I think, is all it is, you know, so. And, and had we had purchased this ahead of time, well, I still need a boathouse, I don't know, it doesn't matter, so. You don't have any question of my boats either? You've probably seen a lot of my boats in the parades and that.
Why do you need a nine-foot ceiling on that second floor if it's for storage only?
It's not nine foot, it just happens to be where the roof rafters end up.
Well, not the whole ceiling, but there's a. Section. So.
I mean, unless I drop the ceiling down to make it a lower pitch, it just.
Well, you've got nine foot up to.
No, I got seven foot to, to the, uh, there's a little dormer that's got two windows in it to let light in and that's seven foot.
But the bedroom is nine foot. Your, your little knee wall is six foot. Your dormer is at seven foot, but your main, main ceiling is at nine foot.
No, maybe where, oh yeah, the nine foot, that's the collar tie. That's what that is.
Right, can you drop that down to 611?
611, I don't know, I suppose I could, it's just an arbitrary dimension.
Perfect.
So you're, you can drop that down to 611 and then that would, but you're not, you wanna keep the roof the same rather than just bring it all down?
Right.
Just gonna bring the collar ties down.
Yeah.
So.
That means one of the items comes off the table for the variance.
But you just deny it right now. Because that way it doesn't happen. You just tell him that he can't go at that nine foot. You have to maintain that six foot 11 and he has to do it that way. Right.
Unless you agreed, what if he just agreed to change it?
I don't know, what's the, what's the issue? It's just a collar tie.
It requires a variance for the ceiling.
That's why you're, that's why you're here.
Well, I'm here, you might as well approve it the way I got it drawn, I mean.
Well, that would be nice. Always the applicant's goal. But that's just one of the items, that's, there's two items that require the variance. The concern is that if it was left at the higher, reason for it, to my understanding what Gary is, you know, indicated was concerned about maybe someone finishing it off at a later date.
Well, if you got a ceiling that's eight foot versus nine foot, it's still, I guess, occupiable. Anything less than.
They want it below the eight feet.
Below eight feet?
They want that top core to be lower than.
Below seven.
Below seven?
Six foot 11.
Below six, below seven foot is considered uninhabitable. And it's, would be considered an attic.
Oh, so I don't.
You wouldn't be in front of us if it was at six foot 11.
Well, if I paid for it, I might as well get my money's worth, right?
Well, but.
Not over the water.
It's, it has to be granted, so you paid for maybe.
I don't, I don't see a difference or the height, I don't, you know, down there, the heights are, are always. But in this case, I, that bonus room is looking too, too much over the water for me. There's no garage, there's no.
So it appears as if it will one day turn into living space.
The, you do understand the balcony is just a deck?
It's just a deck now, but if, if the roof line is kept the way it is, then eventually it can be turned into living space.
How was that?
The collar ties are at nine feet, so your ceiling.
No, no, we're talking about the balcony over the water that we're talking.
That's just the beginning of creating a living space eventually. So if you lower that collar tie to six foot 11, then that can't, it, it won't work. It's not habitable. So. We're not saying change your, um, your pitch, we're saying just lower the ties.
It doesn't make any difference. I mean, the ties are just collar ties, just holds the building together. It just happens to be nine foot. They have to be longer if I drop them down, I guess spend more money. I mean, the way they are now, they're shorter, so.
I mean, too much collar ties, there's a structural issue between the two roofs. I'm not concerned with what those collar ties are. I'm not concerned with the ceiling. So ceiling joists is what we'd be talking about, proper turning out, not collar ties or ceiling joists.
You're correct.
For their actual ceiling joists in here, is it just collar ties?
No, just collar ties.
So no ceiling joists are going in at all?
No, no.
Well, it's still gonna be, you know, every other minimum. It's got a, minimum has to be every other. If it's conventional frames, it should be every single one. Actually, it is conventional, so it would be everyone. So it's the ceiling. But it's called a collar tie because it's.
I don't know if that, that would be required every one. Usually it's every other one, collar ties.
Not gonna hold ceiling, I mean. Any other questions?
Or are you not willing to change to six foot 11?
I just don't keep nine foot because that's, that's collar ties, it's stronger up there and they're shorter spans. And if I'm in for a variance, I might as well get the variance if it's already been applied for. I don't see an issue here, but I guess, you know, whatever you think.
In regards to your practical difficulty that you've filled out here, you say it's the lot width. I'm not sure I understand how the lot width has anything to do with the height of the structure here.
Well, the wider the building, the higher it's gonna be.
Right.
But, you know, it's just the practical. Given all the other boathouses that are out there, I mean, this is one of the shorter and smaller ones and it's set back from the road. Two, two doors, let's see, one, two, three doors down, the boathouse goes out 15 feet in the canal and it's a lot wider than mine. I'm not sure about the height, I can't determine that. And then Jerry's here, or Jerry isn't here, but his boathouse, we built that and that's a full two stories. Two story, in my opinion, two stories, you have to have walls on the second floor to make it a full two-story building. When you start from the plate heights, it's an attic.
For now, right?
Well, unless you jack up the roof, it's never gonna change.
Well, there's a lot of bungalows around, it's kinda the same, same thing.
Well, they're attic bungalows.
They're considered a second floor.
Okay, well, I, I applied as a second floor.
That's what we're concerned about, is living space.
No way it's gonna be living there.
Are these the revised plans or are these the plans that you turned in to Gary?
Those are the, well, he's got the revised plans, they should be the same. The basic change was the side yard went from three foot on the north side to five foot because the survey turned out that the boathouse next to me wasn't three foot, it was a foot and a half or so. And then by the time we had the overhang and the gutter, it was almost on a property line. So I had enough room, I moved the whole structure over, giving us a little bit more room between the buildings. I just thought, you know, it was nice. The only thing is I lose my wider dock on that side. That's why I'm asking for.
You, you know that the overhang doesn't, that's not how they take the measurement.
I understand that, but if you have two buildings with, with.
Oh, I totally agree. They're gonna be close.
I mean, it should have been three foot. That was the minimum ordinance and the building surveyed wise wasn't, so I moved ours over just to give more room. But it, on the, uh, the south side, it's obviously had to go two foot the other way.
But regardless of that shift, the dimensions don't need a variance, but still.
Right, no, I understand it, I'm just saying to you people, that's what my plans are, it's not a variance requirement.
Even though there's a change, there's no variance that's required because of that potential shift.
Right.
Just wanna go through. Practical difficulty. It's gotta create practical difficulty, lot size, unique situation. Right? He's right on that. Not self-created, he didn't create the. Lot size. But he did create the attic. There are several boats in the house, there are several boats, he's right.
Your ridge lines, front to back?
Excuse me?
Your ridge lines, front to back?
Yes.
So that would be the forty foot width that's in question here, that's why you're exceeding that, it's because of the forty foot width. If you made the building wider...
It would be even higher.
Exactly, so the width isn't really... So if it was even higher, I mean, if it was even wider, the roof would be even higher.
Correct.
So to say that's because of the forty foot, that really doesn't play into it, does it? I mean, if it was twenty-five feet across, it would be...
Well, with the narrow lot, it's not like he can add a bigger structure to where it wouldn't be, would have to be as tall. And down there, we've allowed the height many, many times. I don't know how many we've allowed that's almost eighty percent over the water.
We're not really here for that, though, it doesn't really matter.
The second floor is...
Yeah, but that's not the variance for today, is it?
Yeah, the second floor, eight foot, or actually nine foot.
But that's not exceeding an ordinance, though, being over the water, is it?
No, but what I'm saying in the past, you know, some of the decisions haven't been a hundred percent boathouse related. Where they've been over a garage, where there's not a potential over a garage if we have a toilet in the future, to have an issue. Over a garage, it might leak on cement. If it leaks in the water, it's different.
Right, I mean, if they were to wall off the...
On his plan, it says future toilet.
Yeah, I mean, if they were to...
We can't deny that, it says future toilet.
The area, I mean, the other... I've seen other ones that have been done, where they basically put a wall up and said, "This is garage, and this is boathouse, and they've got the bathroom here." I've seen those over at the Colony where they've done that. I guess you could do the same thing.
It's a big gray area, for sure. But when I see future toilet right now, always over the water. I'm going to cut a ceiling down so that he can't live up there. Whatever he does, you know, after that. This one is not, in my eyes, not the same as the others.
Well, the future toilet shouldn't be on the drawings. Because it's set up as storage, so I guess you could have a bathroom as storage, but...
But never over the water. That's another... The height, I mean, that's... He drew it, you know, real nice, I mean, I get the drawing, I get that.
But it's a nice...
And he doesn't need a nine foot ceiling, he can drop those collar ties down to six foot eleven and meet the existing ordinance. But he doesn't want to verbally, so you have to say yes or no to the nine foot. As it's drawn, or tell him you can go with eight foot ceilings, or tell him to go with whatever you would deem adequate for him to have that storage up there.
But still, the practical difficulty, forty foot wide. I mean, if you kept the same design of the building, and it was forty-five feet wide, then you kept the setbacks the same, or the roof would even be higher. I mean, that would really could come in to thirty feet and be compliant.
Not necessarily, because if he had a fifty foot lot, which is typical, he could have went in from the property line a little bit more and been granted...
Well, he could have.
Two to one, right? You know what I mean? If he comes in two feet off the property line, he's allowed one more foot. So if he had more to come off that property line... Which, you know, he says he's five, which we can't prove it right now, so he might be... I mean, realistically, if he's correct, I'm not saying he's not, but if he brings, submits the new drawings to Gary, if he's at five foot off the property line, he would be allowed to go one foot higher, which this variance would technically be one and a half foot. But since Gary doesn't have proof of that, we can't, you know, we don't do the calculations. And, you know, we let Gary do all the calculations on that. Without him seeing the print before today, or, you know, before this meeting, we can't just say it's one five. And I can't tell the difference right now.
Gary, doesn't he say five foot? Didn't we revise that on those plans?
Yeah, I looked at it, saw it.
It's five foot, so he sees it. You can go out there and look at it, the friction...
Yeah, but we don't know where the property lines are, and we go off the drawings, you know what I mean?
The property line surveyed, it's real clear.
I get it, but we don't call off the tape measure and measure. We're trusting you that your professional drawing is the information you're giving us.
Well, it's on there. I don't know what else I can do. It's been surveyed. The friction piles are in, just the way the five foot shows. You can go out and measure it if you want.
Again, I'm not opposed to the height variance. Pretty much.
So if you change it, is that...
No. Well, I mean, I can't prove that he's going to put a toilet in there, but, you know, if the ceiling was built at six foot eleven, it's not considered... How about this, less than seven foot finished? In collar ties, you know, as long as it's, you know... If he put drywall or ninety pine or something up there... I can't make a motion.
So what is the practical difficulty then?
I still think that lot size, I mean, the majority of those practical difficulties down there every time is lot size. They are a unique situation over there. If he had a bigger lot, he would not be in front of us for height variance.
There you go.
So then what if he shrinks it?
Would he still be allowed to have that separate floor?
No.
Living space?
No.
Okay.
Not on a detached building.
Right.
That's... That would be a separate variance, yes.
So but the height, as far as the building height is on him. So if both parts, difficulty, two-fold?
He doesn't have a unique situation, that's how the road is.
It's still, you know, the unique situation is still, you could fall back on the lot size. I mean, if he had a bigger lot, it wouldn't be, you know, so it is kind of unique, because his neighbor might have a fifty foot lot and a taller boathouse. We don't know that. Might have a sixty foot lot, seventy-five foot lot.
Why would the lot have to be in order for not to have to require a height variance over that forty feet? Is there a width that he'd have to have in order not to have a variance on the height that he kept the building?
No, that's all that, that's what would be all on design.
I understand, but he keeps the height the same, he's at a forty foot width. What width of lot would he have to have in order to gain enough on the ordinance to, so he wouldn't have to be here for a variance on his height? Would it be another ten feet, another foot? I can't remember the ordinance.
So you can't really figure it out?
Right.
Because it really depends on the lot, the size of the building, and the placement of the building on the lot. So, you know, there's a lot of variance. You know, this whole idea of that mean height to allow you to go upper depending on wall heights and ceilings and roof pitches. But you can't, you can't, there's no answer to that question, because it really does depend on...
If he had the same building, and he had another ten feet to play with, right to left, would that give him enough pickup there again?
The size of the lot that he has for the size of the build that he's got, you know, it would work. I don't know if the wells are already in that are now going to define where the building needs to be. But, yeah, forethought on that to allow additional side yard would give him an exemption to the height.
Right, so...
But it is, it's a two for one, so every two foot you're above what the minimum requirement is, you get to go up one more foot on the mean height, so...
So to get that couple of feet, he'd have to be another four or five feet wide. So if he had, instead of a forty foot lot, if he had a forty-five foot wide lot, it would work on the height, it sounds like.
It, yeah.
In theory. Give or take. So that would play into it, so if he had a little bit wider lot, that structure would be acceptable, potentially.
Still, the placement is important.
Of course, the placement, I know, I understand that. But the potential, it could have been placed if he had another five feet or seven feet. So the narrow lot width could, would play into it on the height, on the practical difficulty. I guess is what I'm trying to get at, makes sense to me.
I was just going to say, I mean, honestly, we can't even say, "We'll grant it with X, Y, Z." It's, at this point, I feel like it's either we're going to approve it or deny it.
Correct.
Right.
Hundred percent.
So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, hundred percent.
So practical difficulty would be the lot size, unique situation.
Read what he wrote.
Yeah, the small size of this lot and the distance of the similar structures allowed on the same lot size.
He's correct, he's got, there's other larger boathouses out there, he's not out of place by building structure. Definitely not a sore thumb in the neighborhood.
How about not self-created? Let's get through these. Not self-created?
Am I the thing that, you know...
Well, but he drew the plans, I mean, it is kind of self-created, because he could have a smaller boathouse. I mean, everybody would like an oversized boathouse.
He obviously could always go with a smaller boathouse, yes. You know, the height could have been redesigned differently, yes. It's not, like, again, it's not out of place for the neighborhood. What is kind of self-created is if he would have read the ordinance, he wouldn't have that second floor up there. And typically, knowing, you know, that that's been an issue with us, and Gary catches it, and, you know... If it was drawn at six foot ten or eleven, he wouldn't be here with that. He'd be here for a height variance. And we can't predict what he's going to do in the future by no means. I trust him a hundred percent that he's never going to do anything up there.
How about if someone else buys it? And they make it habitable? I mean, we're creating a problem.
We're, we always create a problem, but, you know, sometimes it's not, you know, we're here to change the rules.
I don't have a good solution to that, to that one. Because in theory, it could be constructed, not requiring a variance. And still serve the same function, granted, it's not going to look as nice.
So with that defense, you are a hundred percent correct. Every building, everything can form. It's... Every ordinance is not written for every lot. And that's why they're in front of us. Do you know what I mean? So this, that ordinance might not fit for his unique situation, a forty foot lot, or it's across the canal, or he doesn't have enough room to go forward or backwards. They don't, he doesn't have enough, you know, you can't go forward. He already pushed it in the canal, which I've never seen before, you know what I mean, lately. Which is a great idea, but again, I've been doing this a long time, I've never seen it cantilevered over the seawall.
Well, the neighbors has exactly that, and their boathouse isn't...
How long ago?
Hmm, I don't know, maybe six years ago, seven?
Did they go in front of the ZBA for it?
I'm sure they did.
For what?
Well, I don't know, but it's a bigger boathouse.
So that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying it's not done. I love the idea.
Yeah.
I love it, I'm not saying it, you know, you gain as much as you could on the property.
Right, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, so he gained all that space going over the water, so...
Well, we can't punish him for that.
I'm not punishing him for that, I'm just saying that that's a variance in itself.
Well, not from us. He had to fight for ego, we have nothing to do with that, which, right, so we can't...
So what's your, if it's, you're saying that's...
I guess what I'm trying to say is...
What's your solution to not self-created? What should the language be on that to make this work? If it's, how do you get around not self-created? Saying other people have done it, I don't think that gets around it, to say it's kind of common on the street, I don't think that gets around it.
So, so... I would say with, he tried to design something that was the same as the neighborhood and unfortunately ran, because he couldn't go any further away from the lot size. He can do, but again, every ordinance is not made for every lot. Sometimes we have to give forgiveness on certain things, so...
But you've got to have an answer to it, true, in order to go through with this, you have to have an answer to it.
How about substantial justice, that's what I'm reacting to that one.
No.
So there are several boathouses?
Hang on, hang on, you guys, we don't have to come up with our solutions to it, he has to tell us what it is.
Exactly.
I'm not going to make his, you know what I mean? We help, don't get me wrong, but in the same token, if you don't agree with what he wrote down here, I'm not going to change your mind in any way, shape, or form. I'm not here to change your mind.
I'm not an attorney, I don't know what to tell you.
I get it, it's just that we have to, we have to, you know, we have to read, wait, you wrote, not what we would have wrote. You know, I mean, everyone interprets the ordinance a little bit different. And again, I'm not going to come up with my solution for the self-created, you know what I mean? Of what I would have came against it, I, right now, I can't, I don't know.
What about the applicant, does he come up with another...
Could you tell us why it's not self-created?
I don't know, the land is what it is, I can't change that, and that's what I dealt with, you know, the forty foot.
That can't be the answer for each question on here.
It isn't.
Change the question.
We did.
We did five times.
Got five questions.
Right.
Need five different answers.
I mean, we gave you the first...
So could you, could you have designed that differently so that you wouldn't have to go in front of us for the height variance?
Well, when it was designed, it was the building inspector said it was fine the way it was, otherwise I would have.
How many years ago was that?
Four, five years ago.
Again, our ordinance has been in place for over that five years, and that's why I asked Gary that prior to.
Well, I came to the building inspector, and he looked at it, and he said, "No, you don't need to go through the ZB..." I thought I was going to have to anyway, he said, "No, you're fine, you got side yard, blah, blah, blah." I don't know, maybe he didn't spend much time looking at it, but he said it was fine the way it was.
And that very well may be, sorry to interrupt you, that very well may be, but now, it's up to us to answer all these questions.
Well, look, if I changed the pitch of the roof, dropped it down, it's going to save me money, you're going to be happy, but personally, I think it's not going to look as nice. I'm trying to make Anchor Bay Drive a nicer-looking neighborhood. And I think you've seen a lot of projects that Trevor and I have built along there, have you not? You familiar with our projects? We do a nice job. So that's where I'm coming from, you know, I'm not, I mean, it's cheaper for me to drop it down, I just don't think it'll look as nice.
Got through the questions. We're trying to come up with a way to, we've got a certain framework we have to follow, too, in order to...
Well, you've got a lot of existing boathouses that are way higher than what I'm building, that are fairly new. I mean, within the past five, six years, I don't know what that last one we built for Jerry. So, I mean, you have to look at what's already there, you can't say, "Hey, you can't do this anymore."
Well, we just, you come to us, and we're just talking about what you have, they may be a little bit bigger than forty foot lots.
They're not.
So I don't know how they didn't come before us, being higher.
There you go, I don't know.
So, but you're here today, so we're dealing with what we're given.
And they have come in front of us.
Right.
And we've granted many height variances down there.
I don't mind the height variance as much as the...
Right, so then, make a motion. We beat this one.
All right, guys, so, you know what, I'll do it, you guys can change it if you want.
Hang on, let, we, let's prepare it. On this one. You got your Anchor Bay Drive one, says, yep, perfect.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to grant it for you if there is no door wall and balcony, and there's no toilet in the future.
There is a balcony, there is a door wall, that's part of the approved plans.
But to me, that makes it more of a living space.
I don't understand how you're coming from.
To say the ceiling height, if you don't, if you agree with the height of the building, grant that variance. If you disagree with the second story being at nine foot, deny that portion. Try not to put a stipulation in for a door wall and speculate that, you know, he's gonna do so. Other people have door walls out there too, but it, we're only going with the height of the building.
But then we don't have, he doesn't need a variance.
No, he's just, she's just saying.
Yes, he, he does need a variance.
Not if he doesn't have that height.
You're denying him the nine-foot height, you're not telling him what he's gotta do. It's, you're saying no to the nine-foot height in the, in the main floor.
Then I, I'll deny the nine-foot height, I'll, I make a motion for that.
What do you say on the building height of being?
That he has to be below seven feet.
No, you're saying.
The structure.
Oh, the actual structure.
At two-point-five, two-and-a-half feet taller than what he's supposed to be, are you for or against that?
For the building height.
For the building height.
I don't mind the building height, I just don't want the living space.
You're granting that one?
Yes.
So, say it again.
So, I am, I'm making a motion to grant your building height, but not the ceiling height.
Okay, you understand there is no ceiling height in the building?
Uh.
It's just collar ties, it's the way we build buildings.
Just put the collar ties at six foot eleven, you're set. We need a second.
Mr. Chair, you need to state all the answers. And I would like to request a clarification of the not in ceiling height?
Mm-hmm. The ceiling height has to be below seven feet.
Can you just say the collar ties have to be seven feet, 'cause that's what they are?
Yeah.
There's no ceiling, there's no ceiling in here.
Yeah, collar ties have to be at six-eleven.
But potentially, there could be a ceiling, right?
It could be a ceiling, you could have a ceiling all the way to the gable and down, if you wanted, it would be ten, twelve feet tall. It's, you know.
So, can Mr. Chair clarify that, like, at different numbers up here? Nine foot, or eight foot ceiling height?
Nine-foot ceiling height.
Collar tie.
It's the same thing. That's. Okay, so, now do the because, now we gotta say because of practical difficulty. He has, just say, if you agree with his practical, he has.
I mean, he's, his practical difficulty is lot size, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, to me, it's a practical difficulty, but it also could be a smaller boathouse, so. I don't, I wouldn't call it a practical difficulty.
Contradicting what you're proposing there.
Right.
'Cause you gotta come up with those five reasons on your motion.
That's what he's saying, though, I mean, I, I can't deny, that's what he says, if he feels like that's a practical difficulty.
You have to agree with, you have to come up with your, you can agree with him or disagree with him, but you've gotta come up with the five reasons.
So, you agree with the practical difficulty?
Well, I'll agree with the practical difficulty.
Due to narrow lot size.
Due to his narrow lot size.
Okay, unique situation.
His unique situation is that, um, he has a unique lot size, and he doesn't have storage, and he's just trying to aesthetically make it look nicer, so I, I would agree with that. It's not self-created, again, he's gonna use the lot size, right? 'Cause I can't see his, his information, I don't have it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, guys. I read it, I read it. This has been a vacant lot with a door wall hoist for, okay, so there has been a hoist there as it is, so it hasn't been self-created. I thought it was empty.
Just write what you see. That's your, part of your motion.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm listening to both you and your both changing.
We have to agree with what you said or disagree with what you said. So, what's the fourth one?
His substantial justice is there are several boathouses in close vicinity with the same zoning, all are larger structures. So, that's correct.
Yep.
And not contrary to the ordinance, he said the structure is smaller than both adjacent boathouse structures. It is set back further from the street and has larger side yards. This building is a true boathouse and will accommodate my antique classic boats. The higher pitched roof is to provide the only storage space for boat and fishing equipment. This also gives a nice aesthetic street-side elevation and more parking. So, but it is contrary to the ordinance, and that's why I changed what he wanted to do. Are you not agreeing?
I can't tell you what to say.
I'm, I'm saying that, so. It wasn't even here. It is self-created. I just didn't have that to read, so I apologize.
It's hard, not all, let's have paper copies.
Sorry, guys.
Okay, so we have a motion. Go ahead. I'll, I'll read it. We have a motion to deny the ceiling height, collar tie height, however you wanna rate it down, at the nine foot is denied. She agrees with the height variance of no more than two-point-five or two-and-a-half feet, as written. Correct? Now, we need a second. Three, two, one, all right, someone else come up with a motion. We can't, it's either gotta get seconded, or someone else has to come up, we're not, we have to discuss it and go with the other. So, if no one's gonna second that, well, someone has to come up with a motion to approve or deny whichever portions, or all, or none, or.
No, no, I didn't second. No one's gonna second that for support to pass it then.
I, honestly, I'm kinda torn on the nine feet also.
What's the nine feet, so you're, you're?
I, I'm agreeing it should be six feet eleven.
That's what she's saying, that's what, that's what she's saying.
So, I'll second her, her motion, I guess.
All right, so you agree to the height of the building?
Yes.
At two-and-a-half feet taller than our ordinance allows, and you are, do not agree with his nine-foot ceiling collar tie height. You believe it should be to attic level?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Brian, easier on that would be to deny a second floor.
Correct, deny a second floor, with the height, right. But you can still build a structure at six foot eleven and be off it, okay. So. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sue. She did. In a sense. Say you're denying the second floor.
Denying the second floor.
And approving?
Approving the height of the building.
At? Two-and-a-half.
Two-and-a-half.
Thank you. All right, Anna, we have a motion and a second, so roll call, please. This could be interesting.
Trevor?
That one last.
Oh, I'm sorry, Daggy?
No.
Carla?
Yes.
Shvila?
Yes.
Margie? Yes. Ryan?
Yes. So, we approved your height of the building and denied your second floor height, okay?
Ceiling height.
Ceiling height.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Okay, you have a second to write that. Mrs., we have a lawyer out there coming up for the second one, do you wanna start coming up and hook it up for your presentation?
I'm here on behalf of the Bunnings property, I'm not here for the actual application.
Yeah, just, and then let us do a little bit of thing, okay, thank you. Hence, that's your letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
She originally said not contrary to the ordinance, and I said it was contrary to the ordinance, so I was probably justification to clarify this.
Say that again, I'm so sorry.
You, you originally said in your, that it was not contrary to the ordinance, and then you said it was contrary to the ordinance, so justification?
I'm just looking at this. It is contrary to the ordinance. You're welcome. It's like a double negative.
Yeah. Yeah. Gary, does she do those in order on these, as they are?
I'm sorry?
Does Cindy do these, like, as the applicant, you know, per, is that the order, one, two, three?
As far as what, I'm sorry.
Like, on our list, like, who, who filed first, second, third? Is that how it goes? Okay. Okay, you guys ready? I, I, that's why I was asking, but no, not, no, I can't.
I don't know what the procedure is.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was asking, I would've, but. All right, send it for signatures, everyone's gotta, yep. Okay, so now, as that's getting passed around, we'll slowly start the next one. New business at JZBA 2024-002, the applicant at 8101 Macomb Road. Please state your name, address, well, your name, address, you have to, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Larry Opaleski, I represent American Tower. I am outside legal counsel, I do have my colleague Aaron Edelman with me as well. I'm gonna kinda set the table for you folks, and then, Aaron, and we do have representatives from all three cellular carriers here as well, to kinda give you more of a demonstrative presentation as to why we need what we're asking for here. As you know, we have been obliged to decommission the current cell tower in that area and move it to the property over on Macomb Road. This was not something that we sought out to do, this is not something we preferred to do, this has been made necessary by the fact that the current site is no longer available to American Tower. The site that we are going to now is the only one that was made available within the acceptable geographic location in order to maintain cell coverage for township residents. We did apply for rezoning in order to even get here, that was approved by St. Clair County and by the township board. So, now we're here in front of you asking for these variances. The current tower is 250 feet, so we are not asking for any sort of increase with that, we're just asking to maintain the current height so we can maintain coverage, again, for the residents. I did send correspondence in to you folks about a couple weeks ago, so I will assume that has made it to you and that you have had a chance to review it. I'm not gonna, you know, go word for word through my whole letter here, but I do wanna hit some of the highlights for these variance factors that the board does consider. Here, we do have a practical difficulty. Again, this is a situation that was not, not sought out by American Tower. This is, through a confluence of circumstances, has obliged us to be here before you, asking for this relief. If we were required to construct a 150-foot tower instead of 250-foot, that would impact all three carriers in terms of lower coverage that would be offered to township residents. Lower coverage means less reliable access to public services, to emergency services, to the ability to conduct business. Just to kinda put a finer point on this for you, so, from this tower, from the one that's currently there, T-Mobile has found that in 2023, there was an average of 35 911 calls made serviced by that tower. And that's only one carrier, so if we conservatively extrapolate that out to all three carriers, that's about 100 911 calls per month that are serviced by this tower. Certainly, we would not want to reduce folks' access to 911 services, and that's why we're here asking for your permission today. Again, with the setbacks, we've provided a certified fall zone letter by an engineer to say that these towers, in the extremely rare event one ever was to fail, it would fall down into itself. It's not like it's gonna fall over, you know, like it's a Lego tower or something like that. These are very specifically engineered to fall straight down onto themselves. The, the nearest residence, I believe, is 332 feet away, which is far from any conceivable fall zone of this tower. So, we believe we've demonstrated that that is safe and equitable for the residents. Again, we have conditions that are unique to the circumstance. Again, I doubt this has ever come before, you guys before, to have a cell tower that's been forced to relocate and has to request these types of variances. Frankly, I do ZBA and Planning Commission meetings all over the state, I've never had one like this before, so I think that would qualify as, as unique in the circumstance. Certainly, these conditions and circumstances were not created by American Tower. Again, we, the, the current site has been made unavailable to us, this is the only site that we have been able to secure. If, well, the, the restrictions are township-wide, so I suppose we would've had to come here regardless. So, the conditions and circumstances were not created by American Tower. The ordinance appears to be an older ordinance, it's not really made clear why there's the limits that are there. But again, we would contend that all we're asking to do is replace what we have so that we can give residents the coverage that they need. we can give residents the coverage that they need. This variance is not going to confer special privileges that are denied other similarly situated properties. Again, if you have a situation like this happen anytime near in the future, I'd love to know about it because that would be quite shocking. There is nobody else similarly situated here that would need these similar variances for height and setbacks of a cell tower. And finally, this is not going to be contrary to the spirit and intent of zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinances, in my experience, are created for health, safety, and welfare of township residents as a whole. So if we create a situation where many township residents are losing access to emergency services, to the ability to conduct business, that is certainly contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance and does not do justice to township residents. And finally, what I'll mention before I hand it off to my colleague is that cell towers have special protection under federal law, under the Telecommunications Act. Any sort of decision to deny a cell tower, it needs to be supported by substantial evidence in the record. Certainly, we've, we've been following this closely, you know, in accordance with the decision of the St. Clair County Planning Commission and the Township Board. We have not seen any evidence that would support a, a denial. So with that, I'll stop talking, hand it off to my colleague here, but I appreciate your attention and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi, Erin Edelman with S&amp;J International. Just to add on to Larry's presentation, we have some maps that we thought we could show that kind of illustrate our purpose and... So these are the, these are the AT&amp;T maps, and the text is kind of hard to make out, but...
Can you make that a little larger? Go down to the bottom, see where the plus sign is to your right. Not totally asleep, you guys.
So this DTL 01020 is the existing asset that's being decommissioned. 06020 will be the new one that will be replacing it. This is, apologies, I have to zoom out to... This shows the existing coverage from this, from the, from the candidate's site.
Ask a question. What's the distance between the two right now?
It's about a quarter of a mile, a little less than a quarter of a mile.
I'm sorry?
About 15,000 feet. And then this shows the coverage with the new site. You can see it's going to shift a little bit to the north because of that, of that geographic distance, but trying to make, as, as we stated, our objective is just the maintaining of coverage that is over there. So this would be the coverage with the new site at 249. And here you can see how it turns down to F-150, a lot of these, especially these outer regions. And then you can see here, this is with the total, with the existing site decommissioned and no tower off, just total loss of coverage here.
Would that be for all three carriers?
That would be all three carriers, yeah. I have the map each, I care, provided the same map. So this is Verizon showing the existing site as it's broadcasting now. And this would be the coverage, apologies, the coverage with the new site. Apologies, this is the... This is the coverage now at 150 feet, showing that what this, what the, the new site will broadcast at 150 feet. This is 120 feet because all three carriers came to a top center, so each one, there'll be one at 150, one at 130, 140, 130, so they're showing that they're lower rad center here. And then here's the coverage without any transmission, transmitting at all. And then finally, the current, the coverage at the 250, showing the full, that full area. And then nicely, T-Mobile. Shows the coverage without the site, total loss of coverage in the area. Coverage with the new site at 250, and then kind of a comparison of the before and after for that. And then here's the illustration showing about a 20% coverage, 20% loss of coverage if it had to be dropped down to a lower rad below 150. And that's, that's kind of shows what we're trying to do here. Can I go over for any questions?
So the current tower, I'm just clarifying, is at 150?
No.
250.
It's still, it's already at 250. Okay, so you're not increasing the tower height.
Where's the nearest tower besides this one? You've got one there, but where's the next one as it sits now, the next tower?
So you're not talking about the existing site that's currently...
No, the next one, from that one, the one by Fairhaven?
Oh, the one that's ours, I'm not...
The closest tower I know of is about northeast in the Contral Township, is about five miles away. We investigated those sites as potential replacements for this as well. But that, yeah, that five miles is way outside there, there.
So the equipment can't be modified to use those existing towers to accomplish similar coverage if that tower was eliminated?
Yeah, there's nothing in that area.
There's no way to modify the, the other tower locations, though?
No.
And that distance is about five miles?
I believe that, that's the, if that's what, if we're talking about the same tower, then yeah.
I don't know.
As, as far as I know, there's nothing closer than five miles.
Fairhaven way, there, I think there's one up in Cotreville. So you're saying the maximum distance on cell tower grid would have to be two or three miles, every two or three miles, or has to be a tower?
Or at least, or less, yeah. There, we, this, when this site is being decommissioned, we were given a search range of a quarter mile to find a replacement. As, as we started moving outside of that, things become problematic for one or more of the carriers on the tower.
What happened to the original property? It's like a 40 by 40-foot square with an easement through DNR. What happened to, why would, why did they want to not let you continue to use that?
So my understanding is, again, they just made the choice that they were no longer going to allow us to use that property. I couldn't necessarily tell you why.
Forty-foot by forty-foot piece of property they're gaining income from, and they just said, we don't want to, but they can't use for anything else, and they just said, heck with you. And now it's going to another family member that's saying, now it's being relocated to some type of family, I mean, or same last name, where it's going to.
Yeah, that's essentially correct.
Is it a son, daughter, what's the relationship?
I, the family tree is, is not something I'm...
So the one family wants to get rid of you, and the other one wants to let you in, basically?
I mean, I, I wouldn't stipulate to, to exactly why or to the family relationship or dynamics going on there, but I, I did want to state that you asked questions about the equipment. We do have RF engineers here who are experts in this sort of thing that could probably answer questions for you. Is that going to be helpful?
Mine are more general as to whether other equipment could, if the other locations can possibly cover and just eliminate this. Is that even a possibility, I guess, was the, was my question.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Should we have?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Michael Avery. I represent Verizon Wireless. I've been employed with Verizon for approximately 30 years, specializing in the radio frequency design of telecommunications systems. So with regard to using existing infrastructure that's out there and potentially modifying that to compensate for the loss of this asset, that's simply not possible, no matter what we did with increasing power on existing radios or changing out antenna equipment to higher gain models. It would not possibly come close to replicating the coverage that would be missing should this asset be permanently dismantled. So that would, of course, be a preferable choice. It would be an easy choice if that were to be even feasible, but it's simply not.
Being the quarter-mile radius that they had stated prior, what would happen, I mean, that's, that's a pretty narrow air, spot of land where, you know, especially if you were in the city and, I mean, trying to come up with a quarter-mile distance here and there on these towers, why is that so critical that you can't go further than a quarter mile?
Yes, so we do have, all three companies do have existing customers that are being serviced by this specific tower. Now, these customers have mobile or home internet through these three different carriers, and they also have their own personal broadband access on their mobile devices or whatever devices that they happen to be accessing the networks through. So we would be potentially cutting off service to existing subscribers, creating dead zones in our network where these dead zones did not previously exist, and that's something that we're very conscious about, something that we, we're conscious about when situations arise where we have to alter our network in any significant way. That's why it was specified to stay as close to the original tower as possible and to match the coverage of the existing tower as closely as possible. Simply for, for the residential community, for the, for the subscribers, for, you know, the service that's provided currently, to please match that as much as possible.
You know, with Clay, it's what, 60% is DNR, just vacant, vacant land.
I cannot speak to what is available there, only that this is the best alternative that came back to replicate the existing coverage of the site.
A half mile wouldn't have worked.
That we, so some customer a half mile away that currently has service would be losing service by moving this a half mile. As it is, we are shifting coverage approximately a quarter mile, and unfortunately, some services will be disrupted to some residential areas. We try to minimize that as much as possible. If we could build this tower right next to this one, that would be ideal. But moving it further away is going to simply exacerbate the situation that we're up against with this.
You might lose some, but you might gain some.
Gaining some at the expense of losing some is never a good solution.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Does that also mean that their emergency services wouldn't work?
It would compromise, of course, 911 services, which is something that we're very conscious about as well.
I mean, because we all live out here, and I know, you know, you get to some pockets on the water and you have no service, so if it's about, if it's between that and maybe an emergency service, that would make a big difference in, in, I think, our decision period.
Yeah, so wherever mobile reception is compromised by a site move, then, of course, emergency services, which do use the mobile wireless network, would also be compromised likewise.
So I'm confused. This is on the DNR site?
Well, there's a 40 by 40-foot pocket in the 500-acre DNR site, an easement through DNR, and they have a 40-foot by 40-foot square that's at the end of that road, which is an easement through the DNR.
But it's on private property?
That 40 by 40 is a piece of private property currently, from what I could see on the map.
So that owner doesn't want it any longer, but he's going to let them have permission to do it on a different piece of property?
It's a family member.
Same last name, but that, so it's a relative. It's a relative where they're...
You can't find any other property besides that, that guy?
I myself did not search for the property that's...
I guess I'm asking anybody that can answer the question.
Yeah.
Thank you for your permission.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, we've, we've looked, trust me. I mean, if there was something that worked out easier, certainly we would be doing that, but currently, this is the only site available to us.
How did you come up with that? Did you canvas the area with letters or?
So again, I personally did not do that, I think. Yeah, okay.
They did. Our leasing department would have looked at GIS and coordinated with American Tower, the owner of the tower, to look at potential parcels in the area. I believe everything else was eliminated. We looked further, we even looked further north into the, to the township, to the north, and we could not come up with anything. I, I can't speak definitively to the DNR property. It's my understanding that both of the property owners sold the land to the DNR, and there's a, an existing easement in place for that tower to continue just so long until they find the, the solution. And I believe that that's all DNR land.
All around it is.
I'm sorry?
The easement through DNR, all around it is, but they own that little section in the middle.
Sure. My understanding was that they sold that property as well, and that the, this is just part of the, the business of cleaning up is the selling of the, is the removal of the tower and giving us enough time to, you know, to find a suitable candidate.
So this is a lease? You're leasing this property?
Yeah.
Hundred-year lease, 50-year lease, 20-year lease, so this doesn't happen again?
I think typically they do 25-year leases, but...
Kicking you off again?
Yeah, the, the lease is in perpetuity as far as I'm concerned. No, I think they do typically do 25-years. I don't have the specifics of this lease in front of me, but as far as I know, that they were owned by two, I believe they're two brothers. One of them doesn't want to do anything with property anymore. The other gentleman owns the parcel that we're, we're pursuing now, that's a quarter mile to the north.
And you, you, do you have any cellular towers on, on state admission land?
But I, I don't know for sure. That's something I'd have to get back to you on. I, I would assume so, but I, I can't say definitively.
So you can't just move it 40 feet on DNR land?
No, it's, it's my understanding that that's not possible here. The DNR has no interest in the tower.
Okay. You guys, is that all the, the presentation?
Yeah.
Thank you. Don't, you'll, you'll come up again. Unless you have to say something else, I, I got to open up the public.
Yeah, sure, I was just going to offer, you know, we do have more carrier representatives here. If you have any more technical questions regarding equipment or coverage, certainly we can make them available to you.
Possibly.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so now... It's off right now. All right. So I know we have a, a letter.
Right here.
So now I'm going to open up the public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case only? Come up, state your name and address, please.
Lance Cerdy, 7069 Angling, Cotreville, Michigan. My property is adjoining the parcel that they're looking to put this tower on.
Lance, is your house that one at 338 feet away?
No, I am not. I'm just, I'm just about 55 feet more than that.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys know the whole stated issue with this. Work on this project was actually started back in October, before any of it, went before meetings or anything. All the underground was put in for conduit and everything else, down Moro Road, down Sword Out Road, down Macomb Road to this site, before everything was already approved. So I kind of asked at the planning commission meeting, when they denied it, that is the meeting just, just to show that there's a meeting about it and everything else is already swept under the rug or what? But that wasn't true. Nobody knew about it, except for the ones that were obviously putting it in, which was Hinkels and McCoy. They were hired by AT&amp;T to put it in. So my next question is, spot zoning. I know with planning commission and everything else, that changing that piece of property to light industrial in an IRS section is spot zoning. I don't care what anybody says when you take one parcel and do it right in the middle of everything, just because what's across the road is owned by the state, doesn't make any difference. That's still spot zoning. I don't care what anybody says. There are other sites that are available. They were offered for other sites on Semco Energy property, which is right at the corner of Starville and Angling Road. There's a big parcel there. They were offered other sites, and I don't know the reason. Is it cost? Is it because now this one's kept in the family? I have no idea. But the parcel that was originally, it was on, is Carol and Eric Vistason's property. Eric passed away. I'm sure that the estate is doing to get rid of whatever the issue is. So Scott had picked it up, and Scott was going to put it on the piece of property that's adjoining on Macomb for us. The last thing I want to do is have to stare at this. When I moved out there 15 years ago, I mean, it's nice, it's desolate, that's why I moved there. Now, the other issue... Now, the other issue is, the reason I heard that it was being moved from where it is right now, is because there was no easement granted to get to the parcel that's on the DNR property. I don't know, I've never, you can't get a straight answer out of anybody. Everybody seems to be beating around the bush. Same thing when I asked Scott, "Hey, there's people back there on your property, what's going on?" "Oh, I got no idea." Well, they're doing soil borings already back in September to see if, you know, it's possible to do this on this property. So we've been going round and round, and the county, when they passed it at Metro Planning, they said that the property to the north of this parcel is agricultural. That's not true. It's RS all the way around it. May it be in Cotterville, or may it be in Clay, it doesn't really matter. So what they had there is incorrect also on Metro Planning's decision that they made on this property. And the only reason that the township passed it is because Metro Planning passed it. We were denied, or they were denied by our regular planning commission here. Then it went up to Metro Planning, and Metro Planning passed it. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be a tower in the area. I'm just saying, I don't want it this close to my house. One, there's radiation given off because there's three different types of antennas on there. There's a high power, a medium power, and a low power antenna. I don't want the issues. I have kids, I have grandkids. I mean, that's one of the reasons I moved out there. I know that's not a real good reason to deny everything and everything, I understand. And there is no guarantee on the fall zone. I don't care what any engineer says, until you take one of them and you knock the damn thing over, that's the only way you're gonna prove how it falls. Okay, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for us to speak on this? You gonna read your letter?
I'm not, no. Good evening. I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so bear with me. My name is Alyssa Erickson. I represent Andre Napa, who is the property owner of the residence that you referenced about 330 feet away. Our office did submit a very detailed factual and legal analysis. I am not going to read that this evening, I'm just gonna kind of highlight a few things. I just wanna make a clarification that, obviously, the issue before the board this evening is not about whether a cell tower goes there. I think it's been rezoned to I-1, it is permitted use there. The issue before this board tonight is whether or not a 250 foot cell tower should be placed within 197 feet of my client's property. That's the bigger issue. I know the council for the applicant has indicated that this is simply just replacing what they have a quarter mile away, but I do want the board to recognize that the current site is in the middle of DNR property. There are no residents around. There is not a house 197 feet away. So this isn't just simply picking up a tower and replacing it in the same scenario. This is vastly, vastly different. And, you know, the council for the applicant has indicated that, you know, there's special protections for these towers under federal law. That's correct, there are special protections. However, in obtaining those special protections, there's certain things that the applicant must show. They must show what's called a significant gap in coverage. Their own presentation, I didn't really see much in terms of how 250 feet is going to be drastically different from 150 feet. I couldn't really tell in, in the illustrations that were provided. Again, they indicated that there's not substantial evidence that this should, that this could be denied. However, I want to reiterate, my client's property is 197 feet from a proposed 250 foot tower, as the prior gentleman has indicated. A one-page documentation saying that the tower is just gonna crumble underneath itself, that does not make my client sleep well at night, knowing that, God forbid, if this were to tip over, they are 197 feet away. This tower could be almost 50 something feet into their property. So, and in terms of whether or not these variance standards were met, I, of course, would argue that they were not. I know that there is discussion that these are, this is a unique circumstance. What's been discussed is a unique circumstance to the applicant. It's not a unique circumstance to the property. That's, that's what's required for granting a variance. There is no practical difficulty that's been alleged, there's nothing unique to this specific piece of property that would warrant over 100 foot variance and deficiencies on three or four sides of a 250 foot tower. So we would ask that you keep that in mind in your analysis this evening and deny the requested height and setback variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, we're gonna close public comment. Gary, do we, do we have any letters?
No, just the one.
It's not indicated on my piece of paper. Gary? So this, this applicant came in front of you, can you describe to everybody that's here, what the, what they're asking for? So we understand, our ordinance says 150 foot tall, they're going 250.
Correct.
What are the other ones?
Setbacks.
Okay.
And it's kind of a unique situation, because setbacks in an I-1 don't match a tower 250 feet in the air. So, yeah, what, what proof is it that this will crumble? I don't know that. I'm not an engineer, I don't know how these are designed. But is there a number about cellular towers, as far as how far away that they've gotta be? There is not, it's not addressed, other than in the I-1 district, which would simply mean that it would be 50 feet away. But the real question is, the height of this is unique to this area. We don't have many of these cell towers. Is our ordinance for cellular communication behind in its times? Probably so. But as far as, I think that's a real concern, when you talk about how far or how close this is to a neighboring property. And it may not hit the house, but who's to say? Someone in the yard, or an animal, or anything like that. I don't have that intel. I don't have that knowledge to know what that will actually do. So, you know, yeah, they're, they're asking for setbacks, but I don't know how that applies here, only because of the height issue. And, you know, if it falls upon the property of which it is made, that's one thing. If it falls onto somebody else's property, I think that's a big consideration that you need to make.
Does it change the rule of the property? Does it change anything on the owner of, just say, this square? Does it change anything he or she would be allowed to do on their property for future?
Yeah, probably not.
I know.
Yeah, no, this kind of encompasses that.
Does it change anything? Would they be able to build within a certain distance of this tower?
That's, that's a good question. You know, if someone proposed to do a build in the area, yeah, what would that be and, and what chance do you wanna take on building closer? I mean, it is an RS1 area. Not a lot going on there, but, but yeah, future development would be affected by this tower, for sure. I don't, I don't have the answer for that.
I was not speculating in that. Any questions for Gary?
I have one.
Sure.
Is there anything on file that allows the, that's allowing the permission from the owner to have these people represent them? Because the people, it's not the owner that's here today, it's.
Right, not, not that I've seen. This is a contractual agreement, I suspect, but yeah, nothing that I've seen.
We went through, as an example, with On the Rocks, because he leases that, a letter was drafted to give permission to, from the owner, to allow On the Rocks to negotiate for the owner.
You know, keep in mind that no permits have been issued to date. That very well could be a stipulation that we would see that type of documentation in hand before approvals.
Last for me. Was there work done on the property prior to us?
I believe so. They absolutely, before getting any approvals, any rezoning, there was telecommunication lines that were run along the easement of that road. I didn't follow up to, to know if, in fact, they had a permit from St. Clair County Road Commission to do so. I would suspect that they did, but I don't have any verification of that, that's St. Clair County. But yeah, that, there was communication cable put in the ground prior. I went out there on the day that they were actually installing it and said, you know, if you, and I was assured that they have their easement permits to be there. And I said, "I got no issues if you're running it down that right of way, but once you start putting it onto that private property, then we have something to say about it."
Is it on that, that's my second.
It is. From what I understand, they did run it farther onto the property.
It's bulk headed right, as you come in that driveway to the right, there's a bulk head for fiber optic.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where the property line falls, it's behind the ditch, but not too far in.
Okay.
Appears to be bumping the property a bit.
Any others for Gary?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for Larry, though.
Larry?
So can you answer the question if there was a permit from St. Clair County to do that?
So St. Clair County is beyond my purview of, on this project, but these same allegations were made at the planning commission, as was mentioned. I have not seen a single shred of evidence suggesting that anything needing permits from the township was done without those permits. Certainly, there was exploratory work on the property, soil borings, measurements, et cetera. Of course, you all know that that's not needing a permit. There was work done in the right of way, but again, that is not under the township's purview, and again, that's not my part of the project, but it's my understanding that all appropriate permits were pulled for that.
But you have no documentation?
For a county permit for the, for the township variance meeting, I do not.
Is it common practice to spend that kind of money on a piece of property that's not even zoned? You know, it doesn't comply in so many different ways. Is that typical for someone to spend that kind of money to, just to put that in on speculation?
Well, typically, what we would do in this situation, where it's a replacement tower, a lot of those types of approvals are handled administratively. Here, we get the trifecta, we get to go for the rezoning, the variances, and the special use. So we've, this is our second public hearing, there will be at least one more on this project. So, again, typically, there's not that many approvals involved, but certainly, we have an obligation to our carriers, and they have an obligation to their customers to continue cell coverage. So they're willing to do what we need to do in order to get that done.
Do you have any documentation on the land search as to company or property owners you've contacted, a list of properties, that kind of thing, to show that there may have been other options?
So that I can certainly look into, I don't have that here with me. Again, the zoning, the rezoning is approved at this time. We're asking you guys for variances on the height and the setbacks. You know, if you'd like, we do have, I know it was brought up, let me look at my notes here. Questions were brought up regarding the coverage difference. I know it was stated that an audience member couldn't really tell from the maps the difference in coverage. Happy to have our T-Mobile rep come and speak more to that. Also regarding the safety, I know there was comments made regarding radiation and things of that nature. Again, we can have an expert come up and give evidence into the record on that.
Can you?
We sure can.
Can you hear the radio? Have him?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Richard Nkoso. N-K-O-S-U. I'm a design engineer with T-Mobile for the past 20 years, and the issue here is existing customers. The existing customers, we want to make sure, just like my previous colleague said, that we want them to at least maintain that service. So that's why the area which we want to deviate from, we want that area to be as tight as possible in order to provide that coverage. For new customers, we consider, well, since they, they don't yet have coverage, maybe in the future, we can design for them. But the existing customers is a key issue here. And given that we were already radiating at 210, in the case of T-Mobile, the tower is 250, but we, we are at the bottom, we were going to move to 130 in the new location. And this will create, if you look at the diagram here, the green is the existing coverage. So this green portion that we see here, that's what we have now, which is beneath the coverage that we are going to get at 130 feet. So at 130 feet is this brown that we see. So everybody that is within this green portion will lose coverage, that is service, including all the 911 calls that we had mentioned. So that is the issue that we are facing here. And to disadvantage existing customers to that far, and from the business, business perspective, that is where we are saying that if this variance can be created, can be granted, so that we maintain as much as possible that existing coverage, that will serve the existing customers well. And looking at the, this is the existing site here, and this is the new site that we are, we are providing. If I move back up to the previous slant, what I'm showing here is this is outdoor coverage. And if you look at within this whole area, there's absolutely nothing, if we completely decommission that site. But when we move to the new site, you find out that we can provide the existing coverage now and provide service. And that is what we are asking for, that at the 130, with nothing is worse, at the 130 feet, we lose 20%, which is very significant.
Great. We understand that everybody wants coverage, and we want everyone to have coverage. I'm not denying that, not denying 911. The question for you was, what radiation comes off of those towers for our resident that live next to that tower?
Based on, there's extensive studies that have been done, and we abide by what FCC provides, and we abide way below what the FCC provides. And looking at these towers, one of the rule of thumb is that we don't want the public to come anywhere close to 15 feet of where our antennas are radiating. And with the antennas above, say, 70, 100, and so on, the radiation, by the time it reaches the ground, whereby it's about, at a certain distance, the power is very, very, very small. That's why when you ask the question, that, could we get high power equipment so that we could, if the site is illuminated, these are other sites that are existing in the area. This, 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 and this there. That we could put high power equipment here to cover this area if this site goes away. The question here is that, if that was possible, then it would be far much cheaper and easy for us. But equipment of that nature does not exist. Even what we have here, this is raw area, so we are pushing out. Even what we have here, this is a rural area, so we are pushing out max power. So we cannot even go any further than what we have.
But you're putting it in a residential area where there's others, property within, even across the street, within a half mile that Simcoe owns, that your tower could fall and not hit anybody. Or there is no residence within 383 feet. Did you do your due diligence to find other solutions before you just went from father to son, son to whatever, and this guy just said, hey, I'm selling this lot, and then I want the tower over here? Let's just start going with it.
Yeah, Richard's not.
I get that, but, I mean, he didn't answer the radiation part either. So what I'm saying is.
He did. He said, we're well within FCC regulations.
We, yes. In the residential area too?
Yeah, and just to, for some similarity and analogy, this is a rural area.
Yep.
If you look at like what is in like, in dense areas, the heights are not that much.
Okay.
That means that if we're pushing out the radiation and the density of people within that area, if that is, FCC accepts that, this is even if you have to do that analogy and look at what we have here, it is, from signal perspective, it is extremely weak.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the radius on that coverage approximately?
If I go back, the coverage, the coverage of what we are providing now is 36 miles square.
36, so.
But if you look at that 36 miles square, you need to take it with a pinch of salt because when you look at the coverage, this is water.
Yeah.
So, and over water, the propagation is just flows. So this, if you take out this, then that number actually reduces.
So the other marks that are on the map, those are other cell towers?
Yes, those are other cell towers.
And so they're basically, say a six, they're going to also cover that same radius. So the one on the bottom of that circle would be overlapping. It looks like it'd be, the one on the left would be overlapping a bit. The one on the top, seems like there's some gaps all around, going north too.
Yes, and exactly, that is what we look at when we get, when we design sites in order to reduce the overlapping as much as possible. So to answer the previous question, that we could go about half a mile or a mile away, then we'll be having like signal on top of signal, and we want to avoid that as much as possible. That's why we tighten the search area for this particular site to be very small comparatively.
So, did you have something, Ray?
What?
I have a question. It doesn't relate to exactly what you said, but I know I was watching the news a few weeks ago, and there was a big commotion about a cell tower being put on top of a school. They didn't want it around the kids. So what's the difference in what you're doing opposed to what they weren't allowed to do?
I happen to have designed that site also, or I happened to have worked on it also.
Okay.
And the issue here, if you look at it, is that we go by certain standards and based on what the industry has studied, and with this FCC, and where that tower was installed, which is on top of the smoke tower, which was right there in front of the school, we do special studies. We call third-party companies, and they come and they do specific analysis to figure out exactly whether we fall within the limits of FCC. And that was done, and if, since you followed the case and you were looking at it, they found out that all the stories, everything was okay. But if you take that and extrapolate it in our case here, the signal levels that were measured there, if you bring it over here, it's like tens of magnitudes lower or weaker comparatively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would indulge us, I think our Verizon rep would like to give a little bit more explanation just to make sure it's all landed properly.
Definitely.
Yes, hello. My name is Michael Avery. Yes, so just speaking about the radio propagation, radio waves that are transmitting from our antennas. Yes, we do call it radiation because it does radiate. The waves radiate from a central point on the tower, just like all radio waves do. The power, radio power, decays exponentially as it leaves an antenna. So the further you get away initially, the greater the rate of decay. And as you transfers farther away from the site, the rate of decay is lessened. So at the ground level of a site, you typically have power levels in watts of about maybe neg 60 dBm, which is a decimal point plus eight zeros and a one in watts. That's your wattage. Most people are more familiar with watts on power levels. Your mobile device that you carry on you, however, the maximum output power on those is usually around two to three watts. So you're actually carrying around a transmitter that's transmitting much higher power directly in your environment than any mobile tower ever will unless you happen to be able to walk right up to the antenna and virtually hug it. And so, you know, with regards to our compliance with the FAA, all FCC guidelines, we do comply with all government agencies. We do modeling of the overall output power of our cell sites to make sure that it's well below standards for uncontrolled population, which means a population that cannot, that is, that is untrained in RF safety awareness, radio frequency awareness. So that just means for the average, everyday user out in the field that they do not, they are not exposed to any type of harmful radio waves from any one of our transmitters. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you got for me?
Yep. I was patiently waiting. Okay, how tall are all the other towers?
All the other towers, meaning what?
The existing towers.
Are they all 250 feet, or are they 150 feet, or they? How many of them are 250 feet?
Yeah, the current one we have up there is 250. You know, as to other towers not involved on this project, yeah, we'd have to look into that.
How did you get approved for this tower at 250?
You know, that was long before my time.
Probably mine too. No, it wasn't because I saw the tree get cut to do it.
Okay, so this question also came up at Planning Commission, and I believe the township planner did not have records on that. So that may have been prior to passing of the ordinance, or it may have been granted variances at the time. I, I'm not sure. I'm sure if the records existed, you guys would have been, would have handed to them, so.
Okay, and I also wanted to, it says the green is in-building coverage, and the yellow is outdoor coverage. So basically, the only thing changing is the indoor coverage?
I know that my engineers are going to vociferously disagree with that, so.
I'm just, I'm just asking because that's what it says on that, right there in front of you.
Yes.
Can we pull up the Verizon ones and go through those too? Those maps are a little bit more detailed.
So this is without the tower. So all that red and white, that's where there's no coverage or extremely weak coverage. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I was just, on the other map, it basically showed the only change was indoor and outdoor. On this one, I'm not sure because I can't read the actual thing.
Sure, well, there's going to be slightly differing changes between the carriers too.
Okay.
Who's the lowest carrier?
You mean on the tower height, T-Mobile?
And then it goes to, so there, say, well, what are they at? Height-wise?
T-Mobile's at 210, and then.
AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T's, and then Verizon on the top.
Are you trying to figure out which carrier you have?
I know, I won't say, I know. I have fine coverage.
I'm just kidding.
I don't even know what's in there.
Do you have anyone else coming up to speak after her question?
Oh, I was just going to say, so there's no chart on there that says how tall the towers are that you actually have listed?
Oh, he has to look it up.
Every one of them he's got to look up?
I can answer that for AT&amp;T.
Okay.
So, if you can go.
No, we already have a ski accident back there.
Um, let's, oh, go back to where it just shows the towers. I'm not sure we have them all, but look like forward. Forward, more, 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 more. My name's John Ramzik. I'm the RF Design Engineer for AT&amp;T. First of all, I would say I'm not, I wouldn't say anything different than the gentlemen from T-Mobile and Verizon. They explain things very well. But just for perspective, this is our site to the west. This 1229, that's at 145, 145 feet.
Is that the total height of the tower, or?
That's where our antennas are, that's the height that our antennas are located at. So, distinction, there's a tower height, and then there's where our antennas are at. So specifically, the tower height, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
This site is 153. Of course, right now, because the site is 249. We have another site in Marine City that I think is just off of this map. That one is. Our antenna is there at 262. And then, we don't have another site. I think the T-Mobile map showed a site here somewhere. We don't, we're not on that. That might be the water tower perhaps, I don't know. But we don't have a site there, so things differ between carriers. And then the next closest site that we have is almost 10 miles away, up on 994. I forget what the crossroad is, but that tower is, that's 253. So the, kind of the takeaway is, the sites where they're closer together, they're a little bit lower. As we go out into the more rural areas, we have much higher antenna heights to cover this kind of vast area out here.
So John, do you know the proximity from, say, housing or anything like that, that your towers are right now?
How?
The proximity, so he was saying that, let's see the line. It's 100, where did it go? 197 feet, right?
So you're talking about the property lines in the fall zone? I'm the radio guy, don't really know that, but.
I'm just wondering how close they are to housing or residential.
And the other towers?
These right here, yeah.
I think when I was looking at T-Mobile's map, I'm pretty sure we're probably co-located here with them, and I'm not sure about Verizon, probably there, and perhaps in the Marine City. And it kind of looks like.
It looks like it, I just wanted to make sure.
There might be a nice new site in here that maybe Verizon's on, and T-Mobile has another one here, so our site density isn't quite what theirs is along M29 and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any, any documentation that you looked outside different areas than that general location? And I, and I know the covers will change. I'm not, I'm just saying, do you, did you, say we deny you, what's your next step? You got to look for something. So what's your next step?
Well, that's something that we'd have, we'd have to.
They know that, but.
We'd have to have further discussions with the township to see what the options were. We'd have internal discussions as well. You know, I certainly can't speculate. That's kind of beyond my purview. In terms of what we did look for, as the entity that's going to construct the tower and make space for the equipment, we're only authorized to look in an area that's going to still give coverage to township residents. Looking outside that is something that, you know, we just don't have the ability to do for a number of reasons. So if I had that information, I'd give it to you, but that's just not something that is consistent with what we've been contracted to do.
Who would have been contracted to do the search? If it wasn't you, who would be doing it?
Well, we did do the search within that quarter-mile radius with what we were talking about.
So you're saying nothing was looked at outside of a quarter-mile radius, basically?
We investigated beyond that, just to try to get the full picture. We looked up into, as a control township to the north. I spoke with Arizona Administrator. We reached out to several property owners north of your township line as well. Yeah, as it's our sense that this is, this property is the most viable candidate to replace the decommissioned tower. We could not find another property that met all the criteria to replace, to replace the decommissioned tower.
And we don't know why you're getting kicked off this piece of property? I mean, I understand that there's a pass, you know, something happened, and they're selling the property. Wouldn't it be cheaper to buy the property than to go through all this?
It's my understanding it's been sold to the DNR. The DNR owns all that property now. That they're just keeping this easement open so that they can collect their rent on the, on the tower as we.
And that's why the DNR wants no part of you?
Right. I'm told that the DNR has no interest in leasing this property or continuing, an arrangement for this tower in this location. So I don't know if there's any tower on any DNR property anywhere, but here, it's, I'm told it's not an option.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach?
One question, Lance. Yep. But don't, no speculations. Yep. Where we got? That's Simcoe's?
Was there a letter of denial from the DNR, or saying that they would not allow?
I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
So that doesn't make any sense then?
I'm sorry.
You don't know that they're denying you. How, why are you not staying there?
I'm told that that's what American Towers told me. That's why we did not pursue anything further with the DNR. I work at the instruction of my client.
I understand. You guys, I think with all this information that we don't have, I think we'll post, should postpone it, talk to our lawyer, and then come up with something else and protect the township versus make a hash, you know, or a wrong decision to make with not all that information.
Either way, it's going to.
We will have, yeah, we will have our lawyers ask the questions that we need for clarification, some of which have been asked tonight. For us to make a decision.
Can the board members put together a list and forward them over to you to get?
Nothing in private. We'll, we'll have to sit down. I'll have to talk to, you know, Artie and the lawyer and figure out what we have to do to make our choice, because they're going to come after us, and we have to defend our decision as well, and I don't want it to be, you know, a wrong decision, regardless it's going to be wrong. I don't want to postpone it too much longer. I want you guys to build whatever you guys got to build fast, but I want to make the right decision too. It's, it's a lot of information that I wish we had, just doesn't make sense to us. If you can clarify or?
Yeah, I mean, if you can give us any questions that you have that are relevant to the heights and setbacks, certainly, we can, you know, get that to you. We did try to provide pretty voluminous information for you, but I understand. You know, I've sat on a planning board myself, so I get it. So is that going to come to us through you folks, or?
It'll most likely go through our lawyer to you, but all the questions will be from us. You know what I mean? I don't know, I know we can't meet, you know, outside of anything else, so. I don't know, I know we can't meet in, as, you know, outside of anything else, so I gotta talk to the lawyer to see what, how we can communicate to get our stuff to you and make our decision based on what you presented and, and what we want to see. Make sense?
It does, yes.
You guys are okay with that? I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm kind of speaking for all of us, but in the same token, I'm not gonna vote on anything tonight.
I'll motion to postpone.
Yeah, I'll second postponement.
Okay, and then, give me a little bit tomorrow, I mean, we're open tomorrow, uh, Friday we're not open, so I'll, I'll go in tomorrow and, and see who I have to speak with, and if it's a, you know, I know it can't be a private meeting in any way, shape, or form, but however we legally have to do it to, you know, um, make this happen, you know, but most likely a decision we made at the next month, I'm guessing.
Well, what can, what missing information?
There's a couple different things that I'm gonna... No, no.
And I just-
But you'll have more than enough time to answer those questions for us, or, or get back to us on that.
Sure.
Or if it go, if it's all has to be public, which I'm sure it is, you'll have plenty enough time to come for the next meeting, answer those questions, and then we'll have our, our, uh...
Decision.
Decision, in a sense, not pre-made, by no means, 'cause some of those questions, I do need answers, you know, I... There's little gray areas in there that I, I'd like to make sure it's not just getting shoved off to the next property owner because he wants the money. There's, there's other properties that we, you know, I'm seeing that could have been investigated, but I'm not you guys, at all.
Sure, and if, and if it makes you feel any better, this does have to go, I've been told anyways, for a special land use as well, so some of the, some of that information, uh, I'm sure will be part of that hearing as well, so...
Right.
Anyways, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you for your time.
Next meeting, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do our due diligence on that, too, we're not gonna... What's your timeline on that tower? I mean, it's ASAP, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, every time we have internal discussions, I get told ASAP.
Okay, I understand. And that's why we'll go next month, we'll be, we'll be ready again, okay?
So we should vote on that motion, please?
Yep.
Motion to postpone?
Yep. Due to further information?
Till next meeting, yeah.
And with a reasonable amount of time, which I don't know how the, you know, your, our lawyer and you, you would work together corresponding each other on, on certain questions. She'll have, you know, this recording, you know, we'll be able to answer, you know, a lot of the different questions. You have plenty of time, but still... Within a month.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry about that, it was a great presentation, just, there's a couple of things that I want to look into. All right. We got a, we got a motion to postpone in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, postpone. I am disheveled right now, like, I am all over the map right now.
I'm still on Verizon, right?
All right, no, Ed Lane, we're going to Ed Lane.
I don't have Ed Lane.
Or Ed Lane, wait it a little bit. You got it?
I don't have it.
I kept moving papers and I pushed the agenda, uh, to the side. I have Ed Lane, all right, so we're gonna go to the next new business at... What is that? That's my combo, what is the Ed Lane one, I don't have my... I get that, but do we have agenda? Like, the, uh... My goodness. I need different papers. What is the, there we go. All right, so, can open up, uh, JZBA twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-three for the property at three-two, no, seven-three-two-five Ed Lane, representative here. Please state, good, state your name and address and why you're here.
All right, my name's Dan Furkraun, uh, my address is seven-three-two-five Ed Lane, and we are here to, um... This is ZBA part two for us. To, uh... Hopefully get a, an additional variance on this property based on some circumstances that came up since the last time we were here. So, um... Twenty-twenty-two, we come before the board that was here at the time, uh, for a variance based on the line of sight ordinance on Ed Lane, which was granted at the time. At that time, there was an existing trailer on that property. We were granted the variance to go back to, uh, no, closer to the water than that existing trailer, right? At that time, we were under the impress, well, I shouldn't say that, not under the impression, but we didn't believe that we had any issues on the front easement. Right, um, the parameters of what we were asking to build were given to the board. Ended up not pursuing that project right of the way with our circumstances. When we started back up, um, I sat with your building official and we're talking about demoing the old trailer and garage that were on the property, and it came up in our discussions that we had an issue with the, with the front easement. Um, on Hess, or I mean, on, uh, Ed Lane Road, the, uh, road is extra wide, I don't, exactly, yeah, it's sixty-six feet. Which, from the edge of our existing road, is twenty-two and a half feet in to the property line, and then the setback from there, excuse me, my voice is terrible, is an, an additional twenty-foot setback, right? When we sat down and talked about it, our proposed building with the garage on it, um, went into that easement. So we are requesting, um... What I'm requesting is to go back to the original easement of twenty-five feet from the, from the property line, so that we can get this dwelling in there with the garage on it, on it. It's a purchased product already, uh, based on our, excuse me, based on our, uh, original, um, application and acceptance of that building, when we went about it again, I entered into a, uh, contract with a builder. And it's a modular home that's being built with a garage on the front. So that home was being built at the time that we had the discussions on, oops, so... And that's why we're here before you again today. I do have letters from the, the, the neighbors on either side, they don't have any issues with, um, what we're asking to do. They're glad to see the old trailer out of there, actually, so...
So you're building a bigger house?
There was an old fourteen-by-seventy trailer there, that was actually my mom and dad's. I had a variance, no, the, the, I, I haven't increased what we asked for. We were under the impression we didn't have any issues in the front. The, the dimensions that we applied for were on that original variance. But like I say, when we sat down with him, he told me that we're encroaching into the, um, front easement. Hmm?
The front setback?
Yes.
All right.
Also, that's why we're here again.
Do you have those letters?
I do.
You should have in your pack, like I said. Okay, we got them.
Okay.
Well, who do you have them from?
I have a letter from... I have three of them. Yes. Okay, yep.
All right, so, stay right there, I'm gonna open up public comment, anyone wish to speak on this case? Good? All right, so we have some letters that we're gonna read, and then just stay there for a second.
Okay.
Okay, um, we own seven-three-two-seven Ed Lane Road, Clay Township. The Fur, how do you say your last name?
Furkraun.
Furkraun.
Just like it's spelled.
Asked us if they had an issue with them building a home outside of the existing setback, smack to C-twenty-five feet from the seawall, or into the front setback, whichever is needed. They explained that they want to build and we do not have an issue with their plan. We do understand that they need a variance from Clay Township to do so, and we are okay with that. It's from, um, Hindley, and...
Louie?
Okay, open, it didn't, wasn't put there, okay. So that's the first letter.
Correct.
The second letter is, we live at seven-three-two-three Ed Lane Road Township. Dan and Marsha Furkraun approached us about their desire to build a house that would be out of compliance with the setbacks. They explained that they want to build and where it would be placed, and we do not have an issue with it, it is on their accord.
Yep.
And then, we would be concerned, we live at seven-three-two-nine Ed Lane Road, Clay Township. They were approached by the Furkrauns about their desire to apply for goods to build a home that would be out of compliance with the setbacks. They explained that the plan is, they explained what their plan is, and we do not have a problem with increasing the amount and if they have to rush.
Blaine.
So, um...
I'm gonna, I got a couple of questions for Gary, our building official, Gary? I don't know.
I mean, not that far.
Yeah. Hi, Gary.
That's all right. Um... You may hesitate a little further, I mean, I'm seeing twenty-five feet.
Sure, so-
This is the front, front setback to the road, no?
Um, no, um, I think what they're requesting is to be what the original setback is in that district, which allows for a twenty-five-foot rear yard and twenty-foot front yard. You know, when they came before you before, the variance was because we were looking at the straight-line setback.
Right.
Uh, and then, the, uh, board graciously allowed him to, uh, build where the existing trailer was. Which is thirty, was it thirty?
Thirty-three and a half feet.
Thirty-three and a half feet, uh, from the seawall. So what, what he didn't, or realize is that his property doesn't go out all the way to the road. It's one of those things, you look at it and you go, we're right to the road. So he's doing his measurements and saying, okay, we're at thirty-three feet, we're gonna put on, on this modular with a garage, and we still got twenty feet from the road, we're good. Unfortunately, yeah, the, the, uh, road easement, uh, is pushed away from that roadway, which made it-
And how much is that easement?
I don't know, I-
From the edge of the road, existing, it's twenty-two and a half feet to the property line.
To the property line, so-
The setback is another, another portion. Okay, now I'm getting it, okay.
So-
It's like a hundred and twenty, but...
You really have-
Yeah, that is in the water.
Yeah, the, trying to keep within, no, sorry, I'll wait.
So, you know, what they're asking for really is to put it back to what the zoning would have allowed, uh, at twenty-five feet. Which is, you know, even though it may be an obstruction of sight, uh, doesn't sound like the neighbors are having a problem with that. And it'd probably be best there than encroach on the front and not have parking, um, out in front of the place, so... You know, but I think he's open, uh, to keep it at thirty-three, but encroach on the, the, uh, front yard setback. That's the decision that he's asking you guys for. But probably the best solution is probably the twenty-five feet, and it sounds like this project, uh, would fit into that nicely and not be too close to the road, and no one seems to be having a problem with it, twenty-five feet from the water.
So, according to the boundary survey I see here, it seems to be in line with the neighbors?
The, what?
Yeah, the setback, it says where the garage in the front of this residence looks, appears to be in line with the neighbors on both sides.
Okay.
Is that accurate, and how that's gonna be?
It could be accurate, mainly what we're looking for up there is, is the setback of twenty feet. In most cases, especially on these lots, people take it right to the ordinance limitations, right? And even though, you know, this was sitting back thirty-three feet from the seawall, I think everything kind of lined up, um, as such. So on the roadway would be the same thing, when they rolled those in, they would take it right to that twenty-foot setback, and then build in between, or, you know, in, in this case, uh, you know, it was a trailer. But, you know, um, obviously, this is, uh, an improvement, uh, to have a real home there, uh, with footings and foundations and everything else. So, we should also take that in consideration.
As we go down there, it did seem like they all were in line. There wasn't nothing sticking in the-
Right, and this one, you know, if he builds, that's gonna be similar to what he's doing, but it's gonna be closer to the canal out back, where everyone else is, you know, a distance away. And if we looked at the straight line, that's where he came before you before with the variance. You know, to line it up with what his existing trailer was. But realistically, yeah, what's the difference between thirty-three and twenty-five? You know, that's, that's what he's asking, to push it back another eight feet, um, and then everything fits within the footprint of the property.
This is going to be a one-story residence?
Correct.
Modular, on a crawl. Crawl, a crawl modular, one-story.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a Cape Cod, but we're not finishing upstairs, it's just gonna be storage, since, obviously, we can't have a basement there. So, it's unfinished upstairs.
Garage, just gonna come off the front.
Correct.
So the roof line's gonna be in the s-
It looks like the garage is in the next door.
That's what was there, this is, this is serving, that's the-
And what is this survey?
Yeah.
This doesn't look accurate.
That's what she's-
That's what was there.
That's what was there.
That's existing?
Yes, this was the existing, this is, I have boundary survey done.
Okay, so they didn't put your new homes on, correct, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So that garage, that, everything's gone off the property?
Uh, in the process, yeah, the trailer and the garage are in, we're in the process of getting the slab.
No, but when you put the new one in, all the things gone, yeah. Thank you.
It's already gone, right?
Uh, yes, well, other than, like I said, they're tear-slammed, as you speak, yeah.
So it's gonna be a Cape Cod, so it's gonna be a relatively tall structure, but obviously doesn't need a variance for height, but it's gonna be a relatively tall structure. And the garage is gonna match that roof line, I would assume.
We're gonna, uh, probably, uh, lower the garage roof line down, just to separate the two. On the plan, it's drawn as a straight line, but, uh, I think we're gonna lower the garage roof down. Step it down, the garage from the hole.
So how far exactly are you off your property line to the front of that garage?
To the, to the proposed garage?
Yes.
It is twenty feet from, from the setback, right?
From the setback.
Yes, it's twenty feet and about four inches, yes.
So the twenty-foot nine, that's from the property line?
That is from the property line to the, to the front setback, and then that additional four inches or whatever gets me within compliance of the setback.
But then there's still an easement of how much, twenty feet or so?
That, no, that's, that's taken into consideration. The, from the property line, I, can, can I approach you with this, so I can?
Thought we said we had a twenty-foot easement.
You're in.
Not really an easement, it's the right-
It's, it's a road, right, yeah, right.
But, so from this garage, you're gonna be forty-some feet to the road? Including the easement?
To the existing pavement.
Yeah, to the pavement.
Yes, yes. It's forty-two and a half feet.
Oh, okay.
Right, which of twenty feet of there? I don't have any idea what-
I'm kidding, I'm teasing, while, actually across the street from, actually across the highway from you, I'm telling you, there was a road. And we just went through this, that's all, that's what I said.
So you're gonna be forty feet from the road?
It would be forty feet, forty-two feet from the existing pavement.
Concrete.
I hate to say the road because the road was sixty-six feet wide.
But the pavement.
Yes.
Thank you. That makes a, you know, a big difference in that area for that. I mean, I wish we could go closer. And keep the backyard as straight as we could to.
I'm, I'm open to whatever gets me this house with the garage on it, I mean, I.
We've already, they're just aligned.
Yeah.
How deep is the, I'm sorry, I mean.
Well, I drove down there, it seems like, and that's what I looked for.
Hmm.
All the houses seemed to be in line, there wasn't anything that was protruding, any other ones that were protruding, any closer to the.
To the road.
Yeah, it just all looked like.
They're fairly close, they were within three or four feet, yeah. They're all within the, I don't believe anybody has got a variance to get into the, to that.
And what are we at, the, the, the rear then?
It, uh. It would be, proposed, uh, would be twenty-five feet, which would be the existing, or the old.
Right, cause you have it now at thirty-three point five, right?
Well, that's where our ease, our, uh, variance is granted to right now.
Right.
And with that being there. Back then, it's still a current rule, but.
Well, thirty-three wasn't a straight line, that was, that was your variance beyond the straight line.
Correct, the straight line, the, the homes on either side of us are very, and they're not terribly small, but they're, um, right up to that front twenty-foot easement and they're only probably twenty-five feet deep.
So you're going way back, beyond the back of those houses.
Correct, now, and, and again, I know this line of sight thing is the line of sight, but they do have existing garages that are probably six feet from the seawalls. Yeah, so, and I know that doesn't have any bearing, but both of them are that way and.
It's crazy how we, we, I put the garages on the water.
Yeah.
I built one on Cardinal, that's the, allow it on my hoof.
I mean, if we didn't have any variances there, I mean, in, you know, at all with the setback from the front and the narrow lot setbacks, I, you know, I, I would be building a cottage that was what we're trying to get rid of, that, you know, the old Algenad cottages, right? So.
I don't live far.
And, and like I say, this is a piece of property that I lived in when I was in high school and you can tell that's been a long time ago.
What is the straight line in the front, like, the front meaning roadside to me right now? What, what, like at this twenty-foot, if your, your garage is at twenty-foot, the next garage or house is at twenty-foot?
Uh, yeah, it would, it would, like I say, there are, you know, I've stood there and looked down, I didn't measure all the way down the block, um, three or four homes back towards Steyer Road, uh, and it's a newer home that's out there. Um, their garage comes up closer to that twenty feet, I'm sure, because if you're standing at the line of sight of the old properties, you can see that it sticks out maybe three or four feet, but it's, you know, I, I don't think that there's, it's not into where they would've had to have gotten a variance in the front, so. The, the line of sight in front is fairly consistent, I wouldn't say it's a, a line, but it's, you know, everybody's.
But it's hard to judge when you've got forty-some feet.
Correct.
Right, without measuring.
Yes.
Would it be fair to say if we pushed you closer to the road and, and, and tried to maintain a little bit more line of sight, or not line of sight, straight line in the back? And give you more variance in the front?
Never will be, I mean, just based on, like I say, the, the, the homes on either side of me are way up front, you know, I.
I got you, so you, you would have to push it too far forward.
Correct.
Right?
I mean, I, so I, somewhere, I drew up a, uh, piece of paper that had options on it, uh, based on the front, I don't, did that get into your pack?
I just wish this pla, I, I would like to see.
So.
And I'd rather go closer to the road than go closer to the water.
Was how close to the water?
I'm sorry?
The old trailer was how close?
Oh, no, 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 I see, no, I see it.
See these?
I looked at the wrong one.
Right, right here and right here, that's, that's the old one.
Can I approach?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I drew this as an option and, like I say, I know I had to give you a, a hard, a hard, what I wanted to ask, so. This is what I proposed, right, to get the twenty-five feet. Um, if we were to go with a three-foot-six additional in the back, it would encroach, uh, into the setback, sorry, I'm reading it upside down, four and a half feet, right? Correct, and I'm open, I just wanna get this house with this garage, cause like I say, I got a lot of stuff and I don't wanna have.
And it's a, you said it's already being built?
It's built, it's sitting in a parking lot in Nappany, Indiana, waiting for.
Delivery?
Yes.
You can't return it.
I wish, yeah, okay.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
How deep is the garage?
Twenty-eight feet.
How deep is the house?
Fifty-two feet.
Front to back, fifty-two feet?
It's, well, it's a Cape Cod, but it's going sideways on the line.
Okay, so you're.
I have to print here if you want.
Does it have a site plan on it?
Uh, not yet, no.
Gary. The less of two, the lesser of two evils, if we push that forward more towards the road, because he's got, I know we can't go in that easement by no means, I'm not saying that. But keep a relatively, I know the, the neighbors are already setback far off the canal and the straight line really isn't working in this application.
Because of just tiny little cottages.
Correct, correct, but if we kept a little bit more canal frontage and lose a little bit more in the, in the driveway.
Right, you know, if you kept them at the thirty-three feet, what has been previously approved, uh, it sounds like the number that we're short is about eight feet, would that be accurate?
So where's the eight feet, where do you?
If, if we stayed at the thirty-three feet six, I would eat up the whole, uh.
Front yard?
Front, yeah, the.
Really the backyard, but yeah, that's what I was thinking, it would look kinda silly if you bumped it towards the road, he will have zero, zero backyard.
And it, and that would look out of legacy.
He'll have.
Well, I call the roadside the backyard.
Correct, so do I, but now it's flip-flop, but, so we'll, we'll just say road is mailbox.
Yes.
Or we'll say front is mailbox in this application typically. And the water, you know, we always call the front, the water, but not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent how accurate these numbers are and I don't have a calculator in front of me.
Right.
But if, if the idea was to go to twenty-five feet and then everything else worked, uh, the twenty-foot front yard setback, so the difference between thirty-three feet and twenty-five feet is eight feet. So if you, if you kept it at the thirty-three feet and then pushed it forward, it should only be encroaching eight feet into the required twenty-foot setback. Which then, you know, eight foot, that puts you at twelve feet still, um, you know, up there, uh, with room. Don't ever do anything with that road, but if they do, shame on us, but it still gives room for parking, I guess. Uh, it still has, uh, eleven or twelve feet, um, from his property line to the front of his garage.
That's what I'm, that's what I was saying, I'm sorry, I thought we were trying to go.
My, my request is to go back to the one.
He wants to go back to the original.
To, to stay out of having to get into that front easement, right?
So I think what it is, his request is to go twenty-five, but he's, he's willing to, whatever, whatever we can do to get that in there.
I would say take all the eight feet off the driveway.
Again, it's, you know, and just for your thought, that front, like she was saying, or somebody was saying, um, is fairly the same, right?
As the rest of the houses, it's very.
On the waterside.
So you're gonna make him mad.
There's garages and sheds and everything that are in that line of sight already, right? My, both of my neighbors have two-car garages that are almost on the canals.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think aesthetically, I, and again, I don't care, I, I just need this thing one way or the other, it's up to you. But if you're looking for the aesthetics, um, the front line, I would be the only one, it would be out of compliance there if we went forward.
I feel like.
Going back, I don't think, like I say, the ones that could be affected don't care.
Yeah.
And there's dwellings that are well out of that line of sight.
I feel like if you're gonna cheat him anywhere, then it makes sense to push him towards the canal, because if you're, I mean, it would, it would almost look sillier if you're driving down the road.
And you have this one house.
And you got this one house just, you know, sticking out front.
Closer.
And I do.
In this, in this unique situation, let's just say that out loud, in this unique situation.
Hundred percent.
Move it closer to the water, because, straight line, and I know it doesn't work in this road and because your neighbors are setback way far.
None of the houses.
But what I'm getting at is, we still have to, you know, abide by this ordinance of the straight line, because there's a lot of people for and against it, and everyone knows my position on it, but regardless, it's still there for future other people too.
Right.
And I'm, I was just trying to come up with the compromise to where, hey, your neighbors tore down, they tore your garage down, you know, and now everything gets pushed, you know what I mean, our straight lines change. Because the first, you know, with that rule, a lot of people could get closer to the water, or a lot of people could have to, you know, build further away. Is what, all I'm saying is, you know, just because he has existing houses now, I'm just looking at.
Can we just cheat it four?
Well.
For that, we're meeting in the middle, you know what I mean? It's not.
So, that's a road that I think is probably going to see a lot of tear downs.
An improvement, yes.
And improvements.
Yeah, I would say.
So we gotta think about that as far as the setbacks and.
That whole neighborhood has improved greatly, even since I've been here.
But there's still a lot to be done there.
And I think that's the general consensus of the people that live there, um, that they wanna upgrade what they have, for sure.
And I agree, I just wanna make sure that, you know, let's say your neighbors wanted to tear down and do their thing, that it would.
Everybody's.
Everybody's kinda can go off this.
Said, you know, him being twenty-five feet from the seawall now does change that line of sight, you know, unless it's farther away from him.
Right, okay.
But, can I, can I comment? The, the homes that are there existing would be in the same pickle that I'm in if they tried to build a home there.
Yeah.
So, you know, like I say, not that I'm doing anybody a favor, but if I make that line of sight.
Now they go off the.
Yeah, I agree with you, right.
They're not gonna have the same issues that I would have if they were a channel.
So, what if we compromise four feet each way? So instead of moving it towards the canal eight feet, what if you just did four? And that way you're kind of in the center?
Again, all, all I'm looking for is that dimension, wherever you guys decide I can put it, I'm okay with. It's your township, I just wanna put that.
It's your township.
Yeah, well, yes.
We're just here.
I just wanna get that dwelling on that piece of property somehow.
Do you know the dimension from the seawall to the front property line?
Twenty-five.
No, the overall, from front to back, what is that dimension?
Uh, so I don't know that, because the property is a hundred and twenty feet and the property line is in the middle of the canal.
A hundred and seventy-five.
Eight, or yeah.
I see one twenty-five.
What'd you say?
Just for sure, one twenty-five is out of definite?
It looks like one twenty-five.
That's what she said.
Yeah, it doesn't do the wire.
Right.
And the house is eighty.
Correct.
So if you took one twenty-five minus eighty, that's gonna give you forty-five feet for backyard and front yard, right? If it's a hundred and twenty-five feet? So that gives you forty-five feet to play with.
But again, that, the part is the water.
Right.
The, the property line goes to the middle of that canal.
No, the hundred and twenty-five feet goes to the seawall, doesn't it?
It says seawall.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-five to the seawall.
There's no way those lots are a hundred and twenty deep.
A hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five.
No way.
Are they?
Right, there's no way.
It says one twenty-five.
It says seawall, one twenty-five for PCE.
It did seem a little deep.
All right, my lot on Mingo was eighty-five by one twenty. My lot on Mingo, I live almost to the end, was eighty-five by one twenty. There's no way that Ed Lane is a one-twenty deep.
Yeah.
No way.
One twenty-five.
So.
You're on Mingo?
Gary, look at this, one twenty-five.
You have, you have this, correct?
I don't know.
Just shrunk down?
Yeah, so shrunk down, I'm gonna have to.
Oh, sorry, yeah, there you go.
My bifurces.
One twenty-five. Right, but that's what I say, this is in the.
That is his trailer, that's the trailer that was there.
Oh, you say seawall?
Go down the road.
This is the seawall. So he's, alright, so it's, it's a seventy.
They're way back, yep.
Seventy-five feet from, from here to here, right? Take fifty feet canal, off of one twenty-five, it's seventy-five feet.
So that makes more sense, cause there's no way in Cal, Ed Lane is a hundred and twenty-five.
So just trying to, cause they don't have a formal site plan, trying to come up with the measurements.
That's what I just was gonna, I just got the trailer. See Lance, that's, that's how, well, the, it was just assumed that it went one twenty-five, but.
But if you go down the road?
Oh, I see.
No, it's not, he's, no, it's, it's drawn right here, at one seventy-five total.
Yeah.
It's at one seventy-five total.
It's canal, canal.
It's the canal.
But you still have, your lot is still a hundred and twenty-five feet long.
Can you just candle lever it over to the canal?
I don't know if we wanna build over the water.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Boat house.
I'm just kidding.
I can't leave her.
We're just the Jones.
I'm like, yes, for him, but.
Just the Jones.
Cause those lots went in, those were three fifty deep, but then they changed it, put the canal, so then it's half of that one seventy-five and they're saying it's fifty feet of the canal, that brings you back to one twenty-five deep.
So, see no garages sit so far back?
Put that other, they added that, they changed the plot.
Whereas right now, we're just passing it out.
Thank you.
Can I have?
You know what?
All the relatives.
Which one do you want?
But if for one.
My eyes are like, hilarious.
Oh, but if for one twenty-five, that doesn't add up.
Gary, doesn't matter, you, you're happy with this twenty-five feet, blends in, I sell the whole neighborhood. I mean, I, I just.
Yeah, you know, when you talk about neighbors getting out in their yards and the front yards are coming to and from work and all of a sudden, you, you're looking eight feet around a garage.
Right.
You know, um, sounds like the right fix.
So.
But that doesn't, but the numbers don't add up. If you're only a hundred and twenty-five feet, forty-five feet if you take thirty-three and a half in the back, or if you take twenty-five, that doesn't leave.
How long is the house and garage?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet.
Fifty-two and twenty.
Twenty-five.
Forty-five, forty-five feet.
Right, one oh five and the lot's a hundred and twenty-five feet, so he lives in twenty, twenty feet in the front.
That's right.
One twenty-five minus eighty is forty-five. If you're gonna go with twenty, okay, the twenty-five foot variance, that gives you twenty in the front. Shows, I don't know, there's, there's no formal site plan, cause he's showing the pole, I don't know, that's not to his.
The, the, the pole that is there is, is, the center of that pole is about that far off of the property line, the center of the pole is basically the property line.
So that's if we keep the twenty-five feet in the back, we keep twenty in the front, which would be probably a minimum, if you wanna park a car there, you don't have to go into your garage each time. So twenty's gonna be kind of a minimum, you're gonna be pretty close there.
Well, again, from that existing road.
Right.
It would be forty-two feet.
Right, you'd be actually forty.
To stay in compliance in the front.
So you could go further, because you've got that extra room.
That's what I was thinking, you know, eat up more of the driveway and keep the canal and that way, if your neighbors have to tear down, we can start creating a straight line setback in the back, but we're have to give a variance to everybody for the front.
A lot of houses are exactly the same.
You know, I know, we're not sending presidents for anybody, but in the same token, you know, if the neighbors wanna do what you're doing.
In the back, it was.
Something up and down, no question about it, meaningfully, it was my house, I'd rather have the house further forward, but.
I like, I like the whole project, I'm glad that he's doing this and, and then hopefully, you know, the next, the next person will see the development, going, hey, you know what, this is, this is a, a nice spot, you know, the houses, you know, somewhat need to be updated, I'm glad a trailer's leaving, you know, we saw another one go out of there, you know?
Yeah.
Um. Not that that's a bad thing either, but you can't upgrade, you can't permit some of those trailers, you can't fix them up anymore, so.
No.
Better go.
That was, that was a vintage nineteen seventy-nine too, so.
Wow.
Vintage.
It's seen its day, yeah.
Shack carpeting?
Oh, yeah, it had, yeah.
I took two of them.
Single pane windows, the whole nine yards, yeah.
Me too, those were the days.
Wait till you see all the insulation.
Uh, yeah.
Alright, so.
Has drawn.
Say it?
Has drawn, right? As drawn, right here, she got it already done, and we don't have to red up pencil it.
Perfect.
Twenty-five and twenty.
I make a motion that we accept, um, the plans as drawn for seven-three-two-five Ed Lane. Um, the practical difficulty is as noted, um, the lot is sixty feet wide, non-conforming. The property actually line goes into the water, so that is a huge practical difficulty for them. Unique situation because of the placement of the homes on either side. Um, in the narrow width of the lot, it has been impossible to find a house that fits our needs and is compliant with the setbacks. Not self-created by any means. Um, substantial justice is granting the variance would provide justice due to the placement of the buildings on the other properties on Ed Lane Road, which makes complete sense. And not contrary to the ordinance, they want to build a home that has plenty of storage, that will accommodate boating and yard equipment due to the lack of not being able to build a basement. And, um, none of the neighbors has any, um, dilemma with that and no problems, so I make a motion that we grant.
Second.
Okay.
Alright.
So we have a motion to grant the variance as stated, drawn. Um, a roll call, please.
Marjorie Ferris, yes. Chris Daggy?
Yes.
Carla Orlando?
Yes.
Sherry, yes. And Brian Drappo.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna stick with this plot plan that you gave us right here, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, hang on, I want to make sure that you received it.
Not homeless anymore.
This one that the one that township received? Twenty-five foot?
Correct.
Okay? And, and we know that the numbers might vary slightly towards the road, but.
Yep.
Twenty-five in the back. Okay?
Alright.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Here, here, take this.
And then a decision is approved.
Alright, so now we're gonna go move on to, I lost it again.
Bylaw revision?
Thank you.
Not yet.
There you go. Brian.
So, the bylaw, the next one is the bylaw amendment.
Okay.
That I proposed. To put some different wording, um, I wanted three days, um, like if you missed three in a row, three months in a row. Accu, or, um, excused or not excused, I was, would, would hope that you wouldn't take offense if we, we looked for other people. Our bylaws actually stated two days. Okay? And in this amendment, you know, we left the two days in there, but we also added that the alternatives are required to show for the meetings. So if you want to read it verbatim, the yellow here is what was hoping to be added, and then the cross out was hoping to be deleted. So that way there's no confusion for any future alternates. Okay? So for the purpose of this section, non-performance of duty shall mean two consecutive excused or unexcused absences. Zoning Board of Appeal alternates are required to be, um, Clay Township, oh, hang on, required by Clay Township to attend all regular meetings unless it's an excused absence. Crossing out, alternatives shall be notified to attend meetings anytime regular members will be absent. Sometimes we don't know when we're gonna be absent, it could be a last minute thing. After reading, Joe is not here, he's opposed to, to do this, okay? Not saying, you know, but again, he's absent. So, I wanted three, I didn't even know that there was a bylaw stating that you're gonna basically be kicked off or, or asked to be removed after two. But again, if you can't make three in a row, excused or unexcused, there's only twelve. Actually, we're, we're not even gonna have twelve this year.
I was gonna say, we already.
It's a burden for the township, the, the trustees to find, and Artie and whoever to find alternates, but you guys all got here this year. There's other people that want to be involved, but unfortunately, it's being involved is being at the meetings. Never gonna say that I'm gonna make every meeting, I guarantee you I'll be at the doctor's appointment in November. But I'm telling you, it's, it's important that we have a full, look at this discussion tonight, it was back and forth, all different directions, and, and before sometimes it wasn't like that. Especially where there's not like that when we only have three, because every word is then calculated differently. Where we have five, it, it works.
We all have different opinions.
A hundred percent, and different opinions, you know, work for the township.
That's why we're here.
Being over there as a builder in some cases, I would not want to come up against three people and try to convince them that I want to break the law.
It's not fair to them.
It's not fair to them.
Correct, yeah.
It's not always gonna happen, and, and three does make it four, but it, it's sometimes very difficult to come up with a proper decision.
Well, and all we need is one person to get sick last minute or something.
And it happens.
Or something.
It happens.
And it happens.
It happens, and we have elderly parents, I get it, I, I totally agree, you know, things come up. But it does say two in the existing bylaws, again, it, it's up to you. If you want to switch it to three, keep it at two, but do you like the, the verbiage for the alternates?
Yeah.
Hundred percent. I think they should be here just to hear.
That means Bonnie would need to be here.
Bonnie?
She just kind of fills in.
In this case, yeah, Bonnie needs to be here, and Bonnie, whatever.
So if they get here and there's a forum, they can leave?
I would rather than not leave because they need to learn. I wish you guys had like, you know, three or four meetings, and then you could start coming in and making, you know, motions and stuff like that. The more you're here, the more you learn, and then you might say, you know what, this is boring, I don't want to be on this board and, and drop out. If you, if you just show up whenever you want, it, it's, it's not the same.
Why was, what did Joe object to on the language?
He, he didn't like it because it, it, I kind of said it out of his email, it said, I vote against the changes of the bylaws. This is an email written to Cindy. Proposed for a follow-up reason, last year we had a lot of turnover due to unexpected circumstances, you know, for the three people that basically were replaced. One got married, one didn't make hardly any meetings, and Joanne, I don't know all what transpired with Joanne, okay? Um, now we have a full board proposal, the wording is, um, would hinder the future applicants for the zoning board, which I don't agree with. You know, and he didn't read the. Bylaw, existing bylaw, because it, it already had two. I was kind of saying out loud to all you guys that, let's not miss three in a row.
Yeah.
You know, it already had two in there to where they would have a meeting with us and say, hey, what's going on, you know what I mean? Um, unfortunately, th- those meetings might not have happened in the past, but it's kind of important that we give it the best we can, you know, our attention.
It's not saying don't miss two, it says two in a row.
Two in a row.
Right.
Well, and he, he also noted, it doesn't, um, specify the calendar year, January to December. I think it should be two or three in a row anyway.
This is just a bylaw that came directly off of it. Amber and Cindy helped me reword different things, they didn't change the, the, the two consecutive that's in there. All they did change is the alternates have to be at the meetings, or required to be at the meetings.
Yeah, I think that was.
Versus us calling them and saying, hey, Carla's not gonna be here.
Right.
You know.
Because, are you an alternate?
Yes.
And you're here.
And I, and so far, both the times I've been here, I've had to sit.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
But we would have known, Joe told us last meeting and last, you know, monthly, he, he sent out another email doing exactly what you're kind of supposed to do. He knew he was gonna miss this meeting, no matter what, it didn't just pop up. And you would have been called in the past, would have been called, hey, can you come in? If not, Bonnie would have been called, you know, uh, take the, but anyways.
I don't think it should be a calendar year though, I think it should just be consecutive two or three times, or what, you know.
Well, your, our term is typically one year at a time, you know what I mean? January to December is, in, in a sense, one term.
Okay, so what if you go through your term and then you are gonna stay another term and you miss, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think you even have to say consecutive, because if we're here, we're in the year.
We're, we're elected, we're, we're here, not elected, sorry, we are appointed for a certain term, and then we're reappointed if we want to stay, you know what I mean? Um, so it's one of those things where, I think every year, let's just not make, we could change this to three, it, it says two right now.
But doesn't mean you're gonna get rid of the person, just.
Not a hundred percent, no, not at all, there might be something.
Just means you could, you could get rid of him, and I think.
About this, it's more of, if, if I say, hey, Artie Christmas, you know, three in a row, you know, can you give him a, can you talk to him? Cause we don't communicate outside of the meeting, and, and if he says, oh, well, he's got this, and then he had this, or, oh, he missed it because he was fishing, or he was, you know, deer hunting, and then. Some, you know what I mean, it's one of those things where, I can't say an excuse is an excuse, but in the same token, if you miss three in a row.
You missed three in a row.
You missed.
I agree.
I, I don't know.
I've all.
It's not fair to the township because we really started slimming it down to where we had three people at multiple meetings.
Well, it's not fair to the people that show up either, because we all want to be home in, you know.
Well, it's not that, it's just one of those things where, I mean, don't, don't volunteer to be a member if you're not gonna commit.
Like everybody that shows up could be doing the same thing. I'm exhausted.
Me too.
I've been up since six o'clock, and I have not been off the phone since.
Me too. So anyways, what are we gonna do with this? Can we vote to change this to alternates? It still says the same thing with the two consecutive, Artie is not just gonna kick you off if you miss two, I guarantee it.
Right.
But it's one of those things where it becomes an issue, and he sees an issue, or if I see an issue and I say, hey. You know what I mean, we might need another alternative, you know, alternate.
Alright, so do you want a motion, or do you want to?
Well, we have, we always have to vote on changing a bylaw.
Okay, so, let's vote.
Oh, whoops.
All in favor?
No.
Okay.
Might I suggest?
Sure.
Move to amend the bylaws as presented.
That would be a good one.
Okay, I move to amend the bylaws as presented.
And a.
Second.
Who's, can't do the motion in a second.
I didn't say I'd second it, I was telling someone else to second it.
I'm not allowed to second yet, am I?
Why can't you?
Cause I'm an alternate.
You're here.
You're a full member right now because you showed up.
I'll second it.
Perfect.
There you go, perfectly.
Alright, so now, so, so we have a motion and a second to accept the, the change as written. Now let's have a roll call, so everyone knows.
Orlando Corey?
Yeah.
Albozina here, Chris Daggy?
Yes.
Sherry, yes. Marjorie Ferris, yes, Brian Drappo.
Yes. Okay, motion carried. That will be changed and added.
And then one is. Alright, Chris.
I gotta do all of them. Unfinished business? Actually, I'm gonna close public, or close public, any, any unfinished business? Report from planning commission.
One item came up, and that was for one-six-two-nine Mill Street, Eversole Marine. They, um, want to put in a pole barn, they were requesting, they were, came before Z B A, before, prior. And that was turned down, and now they want to change the zoning from residential to commercial to allow that. Um, there was some drawings and things that, uh, the board felt they didn't have everything together, and they decided to move it to. We're gonna move to the next meeting, but he couldn't make it, so he moved it to two meetings down for review. Concerns, you know, the neighbor had some concerns, he also has a, uh, his actual boat business is, uh, right behind a house, and then. The argument with his attorney is that the property where he wants to put the pole barn is completely independent of his other business. But you can't even get into his other business without going through this other property that is in contention for the rezoning. So there's some things that are up in the air.
Yeah, he wanted to store boats in.
That was the idea, but he's got boats, and he says that his other business doesn't have anything to do with it, but, you know, there's boats all over, there's pictures online of semis having to turn around and.
Oh, wow.
In that space where the owner rezoned, there's. Shows online, that's six employees, you know, but one business isn't really supposed to impact the other, but I think it really is. So it's kind of up in the air, at this point, it's gonna be readdressed in a couple of meetings.
Sure. Anything coming up that we know, that you can say, that you know?
The, uh, next meeting is, what's coming up is the review of Gabriel Marine at Pearl Beach. As to whether he is approved to do what he's doing, which is marine construction at that site, which is not really, not approved at this point. And it's been about ten years since he's been on that site, which was a marina, and now he's looking to get approval to do the marine construction.
So the crane will be gone?
Well, I can't say that, I don't know how it's gonna go. Cranes.
Cranes, I see them every day.
Alright, any other matters for the Z B A? Public comments? Go ahead, tell us your thoughts.
In five boards or less?
I'm on the three-person Z B A board for Cotterville, and I'm on your planning commission. It's a thankless job you guys do, all I can tell you is you've done a fabulous job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So put that in for Artie, give us a little raises.
We need a raise.
Raise.
I told him I said.
Been ten years, I still haven't seen more money? I'm kidding.
I'll be honest with you, that, that tower thing.
Hang on, no, 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 no. Alright, so who's gonna do the German, I just.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I stuck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last thing, everybody, please read through this packet of papers that we got on the tower. Do not communicate with me in any of your questions, I will talk to Artie, I will have the lawyer, I will find out the proper way that we can communicate. To get our questions answered, and then communicate to them so they can answer the questions.
Okay, so.
Okay? But we cannot talk amongst ourselves in any kind of group text, any kind of emails, nothing, you know what I mean?
Diet Legos?
Yeah. Well, you know what I'm saying, just, if you have a question, maybe it would be directed right towards, I will find out through Artie, if it goes to Cindy. Gary's kind of out of it, but in the same token, we, we just can't communicate.
Right.
Together, okay?
We can't have discussions about how you're gonna vote, but you can exchange information, procedures can be discussed among board members. Information can be discussed, you know, done all the time with planning that way.
So what we're gonna do is have the, through the lawyer, it'll be, you know, questions that you want to get clarified, I would love to, to know their alternate spots.
See, I would have recommended, I would, since you don't want, you don't like to take the calls, which is fine, I would have recommended getting the attorney here tonight, would have been strongly recommended.
So soon as they came out with me saying you better have the right decisions, or we're.
Well, you knew they were gonna be bringing lawyers.
I got the lawyers, but lawyers don't, are, I'm not afraid of lawyers, but, but when he said that you, you know, there's no, in my paperwork, there's no decision, you know, there's nothing that's gonna stop us here. Which is fine, we might not be able to stop them, I'm not here to stop them, but I'm not gonna give them, you know, just get my arm twisted and say, well, there's alternative sites. I don't want to impact, you know.
But there's a lot of legal stuff, what boundaries we have, and this gets above and beyond our.
I said that.
And that's why I would have much rather had our lawyer present at the time. And that's once I started feeling a little uncomfortable.
She's not answering.
Your attorney does show up.
We don't know when we're gonna have, this one's a major case, but we don't know when another lawyer's coming.
And that really is helpful.
So we can't have her.
Cause you have the procedural issues.
Well, can't we find out if they're coming?
Part of court.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm making sure.
Yes.
Is that, you guys did a, a great job on that, uh, you're doing a great job anyways, but.
Thank you.
Uh, you really did, you grilled it, you weren't just saying, yeah, you just weren't laying over it because they had a stack of lawyers.
Yeah.
Um, but realistically, this discussion should have been going on from trustees, when they overruled what, uh, the planning commission did.[1766.88]